Evening and welcome to the Wednesday, June 26th work session meeting of the Penfield Town Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Clerk, Sue, read the roll, please?
Barry?
Here.
Leanhouts?
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Tecklish?
Here.
Lee is absent.
Great. Next on the agenda is the minutes. Everybody get a chance to peek at the minutes. So I have a motion to-
I'll make a motion, Mr. Supervisor, to approve-
Thank you.
-the May 15th minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye.
Great. All right. Next on the agenda, I would like to invite Colliers, the formerly Bergman Associates, to talk about the Clark House.
While they get settled in, I'll give a brief little intro.
Thanks, Eric.
As we've been working with formerly Bergman, now Colliers, on the Clark House over the past number of months, coming to the design we've got now, and really the past number of years, looking at the Clark House as a whole, the Town Board had previously authorized for the kind of design of keeping the existing historic Clark House itself, taking down and demoing a part of what used to be the clubhouse for the dining room, bar area, in Pro Shop, and then reconstructing and building a lodge in its place. As part of that, they have been working diligently on the design. At this point, they have put together the 50% construction documentation and had Krista Construction assist with a cost estimate, you know, kind of at this point in the design, and wanted to share some of the renderings, some of the details of what's been done so far, as well as that cost estimate, to give everyone an update.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. Hello. My name's Andy Hart with Colliers Engineering and Design, formerly Bergman. With me here today is Colleen Braun, our architect on the project, and Kara Brown, the interior designer. So first, I think I'll go over the site plan and then hand it over to Colleen, and she can go over the building. So on the screen in front of you is the proposed site plan. This shows, oh, thank you for zooming in. So what we're going to do is, as Eric mentioned before, we're going to demo the previous, the last two additions to the building from '83 and '39, and that's going to allow for construction of a 5,800 square foot event space. We're also going to have on there about 1,100 square foot partially covered patio space on the west side of the building. Access to the site will remain at the driveway at Whalen Road. We are proposing to make that a little wider to help with two-way traffic. Right now, it's kind of tight, so we're going to widen it a little bit. So it'll be still that entrance up to the far right. There you go. For the parking spaces in the parking lot, there's two existing lots that are there today. One's in the middle of the site, and the other one kind of angles off to the east. We're going to demo both of those existing parking lots. Right now, those hold roughly 49 spaces. We're also going to demo the existing tent pad area to the southeast. Thank you. And we're also going to eliminate the single driveway that heads south to Clark Road from those two lots. So just to the, yep, straight down. Yep. So that driveway will be eliminated. We're going to be constructing a new parking lot. As you can see here, it'll be constructed of one-way circulation from the north through the south with a drop-off area near the front door to the event space. We are proposing 45 spaces in this lot. We're also providing ample pedestrian access through sidewalks, concrete sidewalks. There's three of them that'll traverse through the parking lot to go to the lot to the north. So there'll be plenty of parking for the event space, utilizing the existing lot and the new 45 spaces. The new parking lot will be roughly 90 feet setback from Whalen Road, and that was a request from the seller of the parcel, Dolomite, to the town. For safety reasons, they requested we do that. So we have provided that separation. We are providing new parking lot lighting. There'll be LED-style lights, 20-foot mounted height right now. So it'll be all-new sight lighting, the new parking lot. We're also providing one EV station for electric charging, and that'll be just to the north of the parcel, near the north side of the golf cart barn, which is right there. Yep. On the west side of the building, we are realigning the existing pedestrian pathways that go to the west of the building. What we wanted to do is provide some separation between the private event space and the public as they go through the site, so that new trail is kind of west of where it used to be. We're also eliminating quite a bit of pavement on that west side of building that exists We are going to continue to have the same pedestrian crossing across Clark Road. That won't change, so that location stays as what it is today. We are providing a new realignment of the trail to the east of the building as well, new sidewalk to the new front door, or to the existing front door at Clark House, as well as a sidewalk that'll get you to a new exterior entrance restroom facility that the public can use on the east side of the building. In terms of stormwater, the one good thing with this new site plan is we're reducing impervious area by over 25%, so we do not need to provide any stormwater quantity or quality mitigation on site. So we're making it a little more green, which is nice. Domestic water, we will require a new hot box that will be located on the west end of that entrance coming off of Clark, the pedestrian entrance off Clark. There's an existing vault there today where the existing water service was located. The Water Authority would like us to put it above grade in a heated box, so we will provide that there, and provide new water to the building. Sanitary, we're providing the same, utilizing the same connection for sanitary, just a new line to the building, and same with electric. We are providing a visual landscape buffer to the east along Whalen Road, another request by Dolomite. So we're filling in with some new plantings there to provide a visual buffer off Whalen. And that's about it for the new site plan.
Moving to the inside of the building, we had a couple of design priorities when the layout started. The first was keep, you know, respect the existing Clark House. If we're keeping it, we're rehabilitating it. The roof ridgeline of the new addition is below. It's about two feet below the ridgeline of the Clark House. And then we have that low roof area you'll see in a couple slides forward. So we're really, you know, here's the Clark House, there's a break, and then here's the event space. So we're trying not to overpower the Clark House at all. We're providing lots of views out of the north and the west, so people can enjoy the park, whether they're inside or on the patio. We have lots of glass and windows over there. And then we were asked to provide a flexible event space for about 130 people. The way the seating is laid out in this plan right now, that would accommodate 136 seated people. Depending on the arrangement inside the event space, we could have up to 205 people inside the space, depending on what the space was rented out for. As we got further into the design, we started coordinating more with the Historic Preservation Board. So they have been on board with this design. When we get into the finishes in a little bit, the Preservation Board has already looked at those finishes, reviewed them, approved it with some conditional things moving forward from there. And then also coordinating with Dolomite and the sale of the property. We are avoiding any gathering space on the east side of the building. We moved the main entry into the new addition to the north side on the vestibule there, while still calling out that lobby as the entry space, so that has different materials, different orientation than the rest of the event space. So if we start on the addition side, right, you walk in from the new drop-off area, you're directly inside the event space. If you're there as a guest, or you've rented the property, that's really where you spend most of your time. Going south there, we have a prep kitchen, which is really more of a catering kitchen. You're not doing full cooking here. It could be a potluck style, or you're bringing in catering. You can either access that from inside the event space or from the outside. And then from there, where all that millwork is, we have a countertop with a roll-down counter directly into the event space, so people can get food or drinks that way. The prep room right below that, you know, we were thinking, if you rent this out for a wedding space primarily, you might want to access an area to get ready where you're not walking through the event space. So you do have direct exterior access. Or if it's a birthday party, graduation party, you can use this as your storage during there, so you also have access right into the event space hallway from that room. The two single-use bathrooms at the bottom of the screen right now, those are only accessed from the outside, because the park will be functional at the same time that events are going on. So we don't want the public to be interrupting the event space, so that way they can have access from outside with a drinking fountain. And again, we'll get into the finishes, but those are all very durable, easy-to-clean things you would want for the public access out there. Back on the inside, on the left-hand side of the screen, we have new men's and women's bathrooms with a drinking fountain outside. We will be adding a door into the Clark House. That'll be a new door that you see on the south of the screen. The Clark House is unprogrammed right now, but we're providing mechanical and electrical updates, updating the finishes on the inside, and a new separating door there that will be locked during events. So when you have, when you rent the space for events, you do not have access to the Clark House. And then just some support spaces along the south end of the event space. We have our utility room. We have an outside fenced-in area that has an air handling unit and a generator from there. We'll have ductwork going directly from there into the utility room, hidden by a wooden fence enclosure. We have a storage room showing tables and chairs to accommodate the layout that's being shown in the event space right now. And we also have a mop sink in that space, an AV closet, and a coat closet. So if we go to the next slide, we'll see elevations of what this will look like from the outside. So start on the top, you have the east elevation, kind of what you would see driving into the space here. You have the existing Clark House. We are providing a new roof system on the Clark House and the porch and the entryway from there. So that's existing with some upgrades to look like it does originally. And then you can see that flat roof area that we have, that connector piece, as we call it. So we have a different exposure of siding. On the new addition, it's a similar style. On the original has wood siding, the new addition will have fiber cement, so it looks similar, but it's still different. So we have a distinction. And the exposure on the siding is almost double, or just over double, what the siding exposure is on the Clark House. So we have a visual distinction between the existing and the new. We'll see some colored renderings in a little bit, so we can talk about that. On the north elevation in the middle, we're introducing fieldstone on the chimney. The new fieldstone will be a more modern style. That profile has been selected by the Preservation Board. The color will, we will be talking with them about in the future. But the fieldstone on the new chimney will match with these low perimeter walls around the new patio space, and that will tie together, add a little bit of color into the new design. On the west elevation, at the bottom of the screen, oop.
Sorry, I was a little too fast. Apologies.
You see the fence screening right to the left of the new Clark House, I'm sorry, the existing Clark House over there. So you're not seeing any of the equipment that's being put out there. It's also not accessible. It'll be locked to the public. And then on the right, I'm sorry, the left side, you see the patio. It has, it's half-covered right there, but it has direct access into the event space from there. We also have a few dormers, I think five total, on the building. Those were a request, you know, from a combination of the Town and the Preservation Board, a little throwback to what's being demoed from there. It has the traditional style. Those will be faux dormers, though, so there'll be real glass, spandrel glass on the exterior. The trim will match the rest of the building, but you won't actually be getting light inside from there. So that keeps the exterior look, but also keeps costs down for the Town. So it simplifies the roof framing a little bit on the inside. Okay. Now, on the next screen, you'll see the view from the southeast from there, so kind of right along Whalen Road on the inside of that new landscape screening. So you see the original Clark House on the left. We are replacing some of the shutters that were there originally that are currently missing. You see the new layout of the east porch roof, and then where we have the dark siding that transitions. The dark siding was supposed to make the addition kind of fade back and look like a shadow in there. And then we have white siding again on the addition. Next slide, you see a view from inside the park, from the northwest part of the building.
Oh, dear. I'm sorry. The PDF is-
That's okay. So you can see, we have scissor trusses framing the patio. That's what's framing the inside of the event space, so that will tie together nicely. You see landscaping around the patio walls, the way the new chimney integrates with the addition, the fence enclosure. You can just barely see the mechanical and electrical equipment beyond the fence from this angle, so you will not see it when you're walking on the paths. And you can see the event space comes a little bit lower than the existing Clark House from there. Not shown in this presentation, we are doing some updates to the cart barn as well. We're doing a lot of demo on the inside, and also providing a new roof system, new siding, new windows and doors to match the addition.
And just to note, a lot of the demo is, I guess, regarding the electrical components within that, the cart barn, what was, you know, formerly used for, you know, the golf cart charging stations, you know, the transformers and whatnot with that. So there's a little bit of repair work done with one of the foundation walls, but then more so cosmetics with that, siding, the roof, the windows and doors.
Yeah. Thank you. So to get into materials here, start with the exterior. The new addition will have fiber cement siding. The event space will have the white lap siding, 10 and 3/4-inch exposure. The area of the flat roof, of the connector between the Clark House and the addition, will have the dark gray siding. All of the window and door trim, we're proposing a PVC trim, very easy to maintain. It'll last for a very long time, and that will, you know, it's very compatible with the fiber cement siding. Our doors and windows on the addition are all storefront, aluminum storefront system. There'll be a black anodized aluminum to match the rest of the addition. Everywhere where we have windows going into the addition, we'll have regular vision glass. It'll have all the low-E coatings on it, the UV protection, but the dormers will have the spandrel glass. So it is actually glass. It's framed like a regular window. You just won't be able to see through it, so you won't see the framing in the roof from the ground. The fieldstone, that's an example of one of the colors that we'll be working with the Preservation Board on, but that's where our color on the building comes from. Everything else is pretty monotone. And then the roof of the addition will be asphalt shingles, and then the flat roof area will be an EPDM assembly.
So going into the interior finishes, this slide shows the finishes for the entry lobby. So when someone approaches the building, they would enter into the lobby. We would do a feature wall with the same stone as we're doing on the exterior to kind of bring that in and create some interest in that space. The flooring will be a walk-off carpet, so it's easy to clean and maintain, and that will take off some of the dirt that people have that they bring in from the exterior before they get into the event space. And then we have some featured light fixtures and a general white wall paint. And then the trim and wall base and door trim and things like that would be a dark color, similar to the exterior windows as well. Moving into the event space, on the lower left, you can see a rendering that we did earlier on in the project to show the idea of that space. The flooring will be an LVT that looks like wood to keep the maintenance down and the cost down a little bit, but still give that feel of wood. The ceilings will have some faux wood beams on them to create that kind of lodge feel. The chimney on the inside will also have the same fieldstone as the chimney does on the outside to bring that in again. And then, again, some featured larger light fixtures to tie the entry lobby and the larger event space together. Moving into the prep kitchen, a lot of the finishes are a little more industrial for the use of the space. Some stainless steel countertops and shelving and appliances will be in that space for the public to use when they rent the space out. The flooring will be a very non-porous tile for easy cleaning. The walls will have plastic paneling on them on the lower portion, so that any spills or anything like that can be easily cleaned. And then above that, we'll paint it a blue color, so that it still looks nice and kind of works with the rest of the space. And then the prep room that we were talking about earlier will have a nice carpet in it and a feature wall with an interesting floral wall covering, so that it can be kind of dressed up for the purpose of maybe a bridal suite or something like that. But it can also be used as a storage space, and there's some cabinetry and millwork in there as well, so people can store things as they need to. And then the interior restrooms will be a little bit dressier for those that are renting the space out, with some mosaic tile on the floor, tile wainscot up to a certain point, and then wall covering above that. And the, and then there's, we're showing the countertop with an integral sink in it, and a sink apron to cover up some of the parts of the sink, so that it looks a little Then this is the public restrooms. So this, as Colleen mentioned, this will have a little more durable finishes for people that are using the space all the time. We'll do tile flooring, and then the walls will be the same plastic wall paneling as in the prep kitchen. That will go all the way up to the ceiling, so it's easy to clean, easy to maintain. And then we'll do some stainless steel accessories. And then this is the refresh for the Clark House. So most of that space will just be painting out, removing some of the old wall coverings, and then refinishing as much of the wood floors as possible. If there are areas where the wood floor can't be refinished, or something needs to be done, then we can put some carpet in some of those spaces where there's carpet currently.
And as Eric mentioned earlier, we have Krista Construction on our team, who's provided the cost estimate based off of our 50% drawings. So they broke out the different scopes of work, so you can see how much each one would cost, from the cart barn, what the addition of the events lodge would be, the historic renovation. It's not, it's really not just the finishes on the inside, but also the window restoration, the doors, repairing the wood siding, what that cost would be, and the site work, including demo of the existing building. And then some of the soft costs added in at the bottom, the owner-direct costs, the 5% construction contingency, and the 4% escalation from there for the total of the project fees.
Andy, do you mind just explaining what, I guess, what things would be included within the owner-direct cost?
Yeah, usually in the owner-direct cost, that would include your A&E fees, your construction management fees, special inspections that are done during the project, any third-party testing that has to be done during the construction, any utility connections that we have to make, and any fees for those utility connections, bonding potentially illegal fees, if you have any, and furniture as well. Usually our typical owner-supplied costs, soft costs, as they're called.
Any questions?
Yeah. I wrote down some questions. So when we look at, when you were explaining the drive-up and dropping people off, people will be renting this lodge, and they're going to have a lot of supplies. So other than dropping people off, what will be the drive-up for people who need to carry a lot of things in?
So our assumption would be they'd come around that curvature area there where the drop-off is. They could park and walk down that sidewalk, and then there's an entrance into the kitchen right there. So you could bring your supplies in that way.
It's a walk.
It's a little bit of a walk, yes.
Right? So if they're running it in the winter, it's a walk. Is there, is there any way to give them closer access if they're renting?
Fortunately, some of that is, we're dealing in, we're in the 200-foot buffer zone that we bought the property with from Dolomite. So Dolomite has really wanted to minimize parking in that area, so we do have parking that's angled now. If you're out there that's closer, this is moving that further away. We're taking away the tent space area, moving that away. The house is actually in the 200-foot buffer. They're working with us to do an exemption for that. So Dolomite wants to minimize as much as possible, so it's a balance of having access in there, but, you know, I think that'd be something with Dolomite, if you could back right up to the door somewhere, like the Dolomite Lodge, and you can kind of back into that space and then-
Right, right.
-shuffle stuff in. But this has been a balance with, you know, what Dolomite will allow within that 200-foot area, so it's kind of minimized.
Okay.
One thing to think about might be having in the storage area, if there were a rolly cart, something that you could use to transport, so that it makes the trip in a little bit more manageable.
I just think of the people renting, or if you're catering, right? There's a lot to carry in, and I would be concerned about that. Now, you said interior, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
No, I'd just say that's why the exterior door is there as well, so they've allocated for that, so you can bring it right into the prep kitchen area. You don't have to kind of go through the front door, through, meander through the whole event space and everything, that you can come in the outside.
Where, where could you, how close could you get your vehicle, your van, your pickup truck?
I mean, you could park in the crosswalk right there.
That would be the closest.
So then you would unload, and then just wheel it down that little bit of sidewalk and then that side back door there.
And I would say that distance is probably about the equivalent of where you parked in the parking lot this evening, to then walk into this room.
Right, right. But I think Dolomite, I'm thinking Harris, what we're used to, right?
Sure.
Maybe we're spoiled with those. Now, you said that interior, you're looking at event space seated 136 people. What is our parking capacity within that one that's close? How many accessible spots will we need? How many total parking spots will we have in the new lot and with those?
I haven't counted the existing lot. The new lot will have 45 spaces-
Right.
...with four accessible spaces, which are to the bottom left there.
Just four?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on-
And is that typical for the 136?
Yes.
Is that standard, or?
Well, for the 45-
Oh, for the 45.
Yes. If we want to provide more, we can.
Right, right.
If we want to look at the overall parking for the entire lot and try to provide a handicap accessible number for that, we can see what that would be and look at that.
Yeah, I'll tell me if I'm wrong, but I think if you're renting out that space and you potentially could have, let's even just say 120 people, I think you'd want more reserved than just the four, but something to consider.
Yep. We can look at that.
Also, the reason I ask that is because if you are having, if we can get that many people in, and this, this is going to be used by other people, there's going to be other people parking in there. Dolomite's got some great accessible, quick parking, and you can expand out. I'm just a little concerned, I'd love to know the total number of spots to make sure that the people who got to the park the first, and then the people who want to use that lodge then, and they, let's say they do have a big, nice wedding reception there, and their guests can't park. I would be very concerned that that would ruin a lot of things for people. I notice there's a fireplace. Is that a, is that, was that a requirement? Is that working? Is it just aesthetics to make it look nice?
It will be a functional-
Like a gas fireplace?
Yes. Yeah.
And not intended as the primary heat source, but more so for kind of the aesthetics of the room.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And we went with a half-covered outside. Was that cost, or I just think of- Was that cost or I just think of Rochester weather?
That was also, again, one of the decisions presented to the town board last January.
It was a previous board that came before the board two, three years ago. And that's a save, a cost savings, you can see the costs are now, but full-covered and then a half-covered. But the board at that time decided to go with the half-covered.
And what would you say is the capacity of that outdoor space? Like standing or, I don't know if people would sit.
I don't have a calculator.
Eleven hundred square feet.
Yeah. By 15 square feet a person.
Is it 15 or 7?
15, yeah.
Are you doing the math, the engineer?
It could be more, out of my phone number.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three people.
And what's the benefit? I'm not familiar with fiber cement siding. Is that a lifespan? Is it a maintenance? Is it cost? What are the benefits of using something called fiber cement siding?
Lifespan and maintenance. So this product will come prefinished with the color. The fiber cement itself will come with a 30-year warranty. The color comes with a 15-year warranty before you should need to do anything with your own maintenance staff. It's very durable, right? So if it gets hit, be it people playing at the park, walking around, a lawnmower hits it, you're not going to see dents in it unless it's done repeatedly in a short span of time, which hopefully is not the case. And also because the existing Clark House has wood siding, we wouldn't use wood siding today, but we wanted something that would complement it and look like it.
Understand.
Excuse me. I can also note that both the Dolomite Lodge and the Harris Wayland Lodge currently have fiber cement siding on those.
Okay, good, thank you. And those bathrooms inside are beautiful. They're nice. Parks people, what's the maintenance? Is that, is that going to be tougher to maintain because of how nice they are, there, you know, 100 people coming in using them?
I think when we were looking at the finishes, that's why the half-wall is going to be fairly durable with the tile and then the upper wall is.
I like them. Don't get me wrong, they're gorgeous, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons when we didn't go full wallpaper, because that to me seemed like it was one kid with a hand and it's done. So I think that was sort of like the happy medium between creating an elevated space versus, you know, functionality and form at the same time.
But, and also why there's a difference between the interior restrooms as well as the exterior.
Right, understand that. Yeah, those exterior are going to be used by anybody at any time. Okay, okay. And that flat, is the flat roof in between, is that just to give the distinction between the two buildings?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to.
We do, we do also have some mechanical equipment up there. Again, not visible from the ground, but that's for the kitchens and the bathrooms.
Okay. And not to cover here, but I, do we have plans for the Clark House yet of what will actually go on inside there?
That remains the.
Okay. To be D.
To be, to be D, yes, to be D.
All right, I'll let other people.
I think to your point, Linda, the last discussion about the inside of the Clark House was to not make it a storage area.
Correct. In a previous iteration, we showed that in the original Clark House portion being used for storage space. And then that's why we, the town board advised saying, please don't do that. Create the storage space in the connecting location, in the connecting area. And, and so that's why the footprint actually changed from the initial designs to what you're seeing today. That's a fair.
And again, I don't think it was fully decided, but I think there was some thought maybe that would become kind of a historic, you know, some kind of display of some sort that could be made available to the public.
But these costs don't touch anything inside the Clark House?
We, we do have some electrical and mechanical updates, but everything else is the finishes and historic renovations.
Okay. So the outside and?
Yeah, the siding, the windows, the doors.
Keeping it safe.
And because of that, because it's unprogrammed right now, that's why we added the door in between, from there, the lockable door in between the event space and the Clark House. Because they could, depending on future use, you could open that or you can close off the Clark House right now.
Okay, okay. And do you have a picture of that? Could you go back to the front of the Clark House?
Did you want to go back to?
The renderings?
Yep.
And I like that inside. I do want to go back to that picture because there's two different pictures, and I'm curious which one.
This one or do you want to go to the next?
Can you get to the front of that Clark House? Can we see the front? Is there a picture like that of the actual front? No?
No.
Because you're not doing that or just you don't have the drawing?
We, yeah, we don't have it. And the front of the house is really renovation work, again, siding, windows, roof.
Right. Because I noticed that is, the chimney is gone. So is that part of your, your cost? You'll be removing the chimney from the Clark House? I know the Historic Preservation Board decided that that was not needed, so I was just curious if that was included.
Yes.
In the cost. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to see it?
I do want to go back to those pictures. This is just my sheer curiosity. So there's Inspiration Image A, which is lighter in color, and Inspiration Image B, which is darker in color?
So those were mostly just to show the concept of using that as an event space with the chimney and some nice larger light fixtures and some kind of details in the ceiling. Those aren't specifically Inspiration that they're going to look exactly like that.
Right.
The rendering below is closer to what the space will look like.
Okay. And there's a, I don't quite understand that middle section there. Is that like a arch? Yeah, I don't quite get that. What is that? What is?
That's the patio roof framing tying into the event space roof framing. Again, those were very conceptual renderings. Won't look exactly like that, but.
And I think even that rendering is when the, the entire porch was going to be covered. So now that it's actually shrinking to about half of that, it won't.
Be that dramatic inside.
Quite the same, yeah.
And I think, is there flexibility on like, so the interior beam, like I know we talked about faux covering, but if you wanted to go for a lighter color, you could. So if there's a preference, you know, on the interior of it being lighter wood versus darker wood, this is where, you know, those kinds of decisions can, can be made. They haven't bought any furniture, any material yet. No material's been purchased.
And just to make sure, the dormers are for aesthetics only. There will be no light coming in there just to keep the look of the building, right?
Correct.
Well, they, in the current building, there's kind of a flat roof space in front of the dormers that I think has become an issue with water. Is the proposed dormer is just kind of built into the slope? You won't have any flat roof?
Yes.
Okay. On the front, I guess it'd be the west side of the porch. Carrie, I don't know if you can flip back to that. And this is just.
Do you want to go to the rendering?
Yeah, that one's fine. No, that one's fine. In the bottom, the fascia board, I guess is the best way to describe it, being tapered like that. Is that just a design feature? Was that something that was?
It is a. It came from the inside, actually, because we don't want exposed ductwork. It's a dressier space. In here, we're using scissor trusses to frame the event space. And again, to keep costs down, we're also using scissor trusses to frame the patio and the entry lobby.
I see. Okay, it's just got a little more modern look to it than maybe what I was envisioning it might look like. But I understand if there's design features that need to be built into that. How about the basement of the Clark House? I know that was a topic that we talked about. Is that intact as a regular basement, full basement with some mechanicals?
It is with, I know we've had, or I say we. Torche Structural Engineering has done a number of site visits to take a look at everything. While the ceiling is relatively low, it's really low in certain spots because of the ductwork, having a number of different furnaces in the basement to support the existing building and the different areas within. By not needing to have all of the mechanicals in that basement anymore, there's no need for all of that ductwork to be ducking underneath and causing additional issues. So they felt that there'd be, I guess, options to mitigate, you know, the water infiltration, to be able to repair some of the, and re-point some of the existing foundation. Some of the spots where, right now, there's a, an old staircase that came up. It was like a trapdoor. That will actually be infilled with just CMU block so that you'll see that it's different than the regular foundation, but also from a historic preservation standpoint to see that it is something that's new and that it wasn't quite the, that's not how it was originally, rather than trying to piece it in and make it look like it was always a solid wall.
Understood. You know, over the many generations or renderings, I guess I should say, that we've, we've looked at. I think we've added a lot of green space in this, in this plan compared to maybe where we started. So I appreciate that. And let's see, you answered the question, I think, on the buffer with Dolomite. I don't know if you can go back to that map. So if I'm hearing you correctly, we're in communication with them, our staff is in communication with them.
Yes.
And does it sound like, I'm envisioning that buffer is probably somewhere in the half circle of the, of the loop.
The buffer comes just outside that east wall as those carries coming down. That's kind of where the buffer line falls, 200 feet back. There's also a buffer off of Clark Road that kind of goes through the middle of the event space, actually. So that's why they're looking to exempt the house portion. And then they were good with, we're moving the parking, so right now it kind of angles closer to the road. Moving that back, so as part of replacement of that parking lot, making it one-way, moves that further away from the road. We're getting rid of the tent space that used to be at the corner. That was their biggest area of concern, is if a truck's coming around the corner, they're loading trucks, somebody comes around the corner, loses brakes, something else. We don't have something in that area for safety. So that's why we're taking that away. We're adding green space over there. As Carrie's pulling up that area, you can see that what was a former tent pad location is coming out. So that's why everything's being focused to the north, to the parking lot, and then being modified, you know, accordingly. And they've been working with us on that. So we've got to finalize stuff with their lawyers for it, accepting out where the new Clark House is going. But they've been working with us right along and have been open to what we're doing and as long as we're kind of putting the focus to the north and to the west, not, you know, expanding stuff to the east.
And even one design change that took place from Dolomite's review was the entryway, originally the door entrance faced this way. And they're like, oh, can it be, any way for it to face sort of?
That brings it back to the loading area. They even asked to move that around and not have it on the east side and said, is there any way to push it to the north? So that's why.
Yeah.
I said they're, they're sensitive to that.
Right, right.
Even that much, they asked us to rotate that and move that facing north instead of east to, as people come for a wedding or gathering, they're not assembling on the east side in front of the door area, they'd be more assembling up north.
Why is that? Is that because, again, the buffer, they want that much buffer?
Yep. And that, that continues all the way up Wayland and as well as on Clark, both sides. That's why new Shadow Pines development on the north end, it's so far back from the road, the parking's back from the road. The pond can go in that, but they just don't want, you know, people assembling stuff in that locations. You can't have access drives, you can't have pathways. They just don't want areas of, you know, people assembling in that, in that buffer. So that's why, as you're seeing, the new Shadow Pines development go in, the parking sits back from the road a bit and is outside of that 200-foot area.
Now that entrance into the parking lot is going to get a lot more traffic if we start renting that out.
They're proposing to widen that out and expand that entrance and improve that from what the current condition is. And then we'll get a number on what the parking is on that north end and.
Yeah, okay.
And the walking paths, I think the placement of those is consistent with what, at least the feedback was previously about getting it away from the, the building itself. Not, you know, kind of conflict with something that's going on on the porch, so.
Yep, and that would still match, excuse me, and utilize the existing crosswalk on that long Clark Road. It would just remove the, that easternmost curb cut that currently kind of runs north-south along the existing building.
Sure.
What about outdoor lighting for that covered space and that, kind of the green space there? I'm thinking they're going to have people out there, if kids are there, those kids are automatically going to go to that green space. Now, most of the lodge, you know, that's in the spring, summer months, but before it stays light at night, right now, you'd be fine because 10 o'clock, it's still relatively light. What type of lighting will be outside?
We do have pendant lighting under the patio.
Under the, okay.
Or under the cover on the patio, which will light the patio. And then we do have site lighting out, yeah, proposed in that green area.
Okay. Yeah, that one, I'm just thinking from a pure safety that adults can keep an eye on.
And also just reducing an attractive nuisance or?
Very good point. All right, thank you.
And you spoke of the renovations, the cart barn, is there plans for its use though later? I know right now it's, it's helping out DPW. Is that kind of still the thought going forward or more for the equipment that would be housed on-site to take care of the Shadow Pines?
So I'm going to say it'd be a combination of kind of our own storage right now in the interim. You know, once the actual DPW garage project is finished, you know, some of that stuff would be able to come back. But I think just having a storage area on the property also helps support, you know, any, I guess, any needs or, you know, amenities that may be taking place on the property. You know, I know they've had a number of disc golf tournaments. I know there's a small storage area going in with the pickleball development, but if there was going to be some type of bigger, I guess, bigger event or something even separate from the, the event space in the lodge itself taking place there and there was storage needed, that the, that cart barn would be flexible to allow for that in the future.
And I'm assuming the only utilities out there are electric?
Correct.
So there was no option?
So non-conditioned space currently, it's, yeah, it's not insulated. It's just more or less cold storage. There is electric out there. A lot of it is no longer functional, and that's part of the, kind of the demo removing all of the old electric chargers and everything that hung from the ceiling to plug in however many golf carts each night.
So really not a night, not an option for restrooms out there as opposed to, as part of the building because of the added?
Correct. There's no, there's no sewer extending that far back. You know, and even to do that, I think because of how far back it is from the road, it would end up requiring its own sewage ejection pump. You'd have the electric, but yeah. Not currently conditioned, if, if there were a need at some point in the future, that could be considered having its own separate services running back to that.
Krista, want to chime in or add anything or no?
If there's any specific questions on the, on the cost or anything, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah, any?
Yeah, let's go back to the, thank you. Let's go back to that. The lodge, we're looking at 3.9. Historic renovation is for the actual Clark House, correct?
Correct.
All right. And scroll down a little so I can see the bottom.
Oh, forgive me, yep. I'll scroll out a little bit as well. Yes, let me just, I didn't mean to hide that from everyone.
Okay, okay. So I'll, I'll end 8.1 million. How was that with what was, when it was first discussed and approved to get plans going forward? Does anybody know here?
I think originally we were in the five to $6 million range. That was a number of years ago, but this also incorporates more site improvements. I think more on the historic end of it. Originally it was just the lodge is kind of what the focus was on back then. Now we're expanding, is renovating the parking lot, adding site lighting, doing the pathways. So yes, the number's grown. Yes, costs have gone up, but I think the scope of the project has increased from what it was.
Yeah.
It was just kind of focused on the lodge before. Now it's, okay, let's fit out the site to fit all of that.
And explain again, what is the 4% escalation? What is that?
So just to. Sorry. Potential cost if the project was to get delayed, just for your consideration, we provide estimates. You guys would set the budget, right? So if that's something that you feel is needed, then make sure the cost is included.
Sure. It's a buffer, right?
And I'd say part of that escalation, you correct me if I'm wrong, but would be, you know, these numbers are kind of going off of today's prices, knowing that the design knowing that the design is at the 50% stage. It's still got, you know, there's still more to do to get to the 100% before construction documentation is actually, you know, finalized and it's put out for bid. And, you know, by the time the bids come in, you know, today's numbers may increase by that 4%. So it did want to project out a little bit as well.
Correct.
Any, anything else?
Just wanted to note that they did bring sample materials are on the table behind you. So either if you want to look at those now or at the end of the meeting, they said they'd leave them. But just so you can look at the colors, touch and feel, the materials and everything else are here for your review and look.
And currently, the Historic Preservation Board has approved samples that are behind us.
Yep, I think we're still working on a couple of small items. The color of the cultured stone and potentially the roof on the Clark House not being asphalt. We're still working on that, though.
Okay.
But at the end of this, the Clark House will be solid? It'll be safe? It just won't be finished on the inside? Is that a fair?
Well, it'll be finished.
It won't be. Won't be programmed.
Furnished or programmed.
Okay. It'll be finished so people could safely walk through it.
Oh, absolutely.
It's not going to be pretty per se, but.
It'll be flooring, it'll be, it'll be pretty nice, yes.
There won't be some drawings of what.
Okay, I missed that.
And that's contemplated as part of the historic.
Yes.
Right? Let's just make sure we understand that.
So.
Oh, you had it.
Do they have it?
Yep.
There was this. So in terms of like wall paint above the wainscoting, trim and wainscot paint, there may be existing wooden floor that would be refinished if it's salvageable. That was the preference. And then things that could not be salvaged, they would be carpeted.
Okay.
With a sort of a neutral carpet that goes with all of this.
Right, so all those finishes, what we see there, obviously not the carpets and.
Yeah.
Pictures and tables and stuff. Okay, I miss that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it'd be finished, it'd be essentially move-in ready. It just would not have the furniture. It wouldn't have pictures on the walls.
Okay.
It would be conditioned space, accounting for utilities, you know, in this part to be, I believe, separately controlled than the actual event space itself.
Yeah, and the second floor would not be utilized for public.
Yeah, because of some code, I guess with keeping the stairs and the landing at the top of the stairs, there would be some, I guess, code occupancy issues on being able to have that open to the public. So the intent is to have, you know, velvet rope or something at the bottom of the stairs. You can look up the stairs, you see that it's finished up there, that it goes, you know, it'd be accessible. It could be used for storage. It just wouldn't be open to be, I guess, used and occupied by the public.
So it's a historical home when we go to a museum.
Sure, you can look down the hallway, but you can't walk in the room.
Don't go that way. All right, this is good. I didn't realize that. I'm sorry, I missed that. So that's really good to hear.
The complete construction set has a pretty good scope of work, you know. I might call it like a vanilla box finish where the programming, you know, do I need an outlet here, outlet there, is not there. But all the stuff will be freshly painted, floors refinished and working.
Right, so bringing that up, when you talk about that and the programming and the outlets, you bring that up to 21st century as far as the number of outlets per wall.
Correct.
I didn't know that outlets, quite frankly. Did they have outlets back then? I don't know.
1836.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. All right. Next item on the agenda, you can make your way up here, Dave, is the intermunicipal agreement with PCTV and Penfield Schools.
For the record?
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. That was nice, that was a good job.
Hey, Dave.
So this is more of a formality. This will be contract number five with the school district, but this is for AV services as we've done over the years in the past. Both legal teams from the town as well as the school district have reviewed the contract. It's really up to the board if you have any questions, since this is more of a new board.
Yeah, I don't. So this is an action item?
Yep, so we'll be going to, for the legislative session is to have a resolution for authorization for the supervisor to sign the agreement.
Okay.
So I can make the motion to prepare a resolution to authorize Supervisor Leanhouse to sign the agreement?
Yep.
What we need?
That's it.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. A vote, Sue? Do we need to?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, well, thanks, Dave.
That was easy.
Nothing to it.
Have a good night.
You too.
I will, no, because that gets expensive.
Next on the agenda is the intermunicipal agreement for temporary brush drop off 2660 Penfield Road. We have a few. Yeah, I don't want, who wants to lead this discussion, but it's a team effort here.
Eeny, meeny, moe this one. We've got the draft IMA was provided to the town board. It has been reviewed by both the town attorney and the attorney for the school district. I know that we are looking, based on some feedback that's been received, we are looking and working with, going to be contacting DOT to see if there's any additional signage that could be located out near the project site on 441. We did evaluate, you know, in terms of, you know, we did look at that. DOT had no concerns about the proposed use and expressed that in writing to us at the time that we were looking at it.
Right.
So.
I just, and we talked, we communicated this. I think the change in traffic patterns and the concern that the residents expressed of those trucks pulling in, making that left, trucks coming out, there was concern there. So I do appreciate reaching out to the Department of Transportation.
One thing I thought was great idea, give Bob credit, is changing the hours from nine to three, that seems to make sense.
Yeah, Bob's idea, I.
Getting away.
I think that's a good idea. Can we talk about that?
Because actually being, you know, I first got married was in Massillon. And there's definitely a lot of traffic between 6:30 and 7:30, something like that, eight o'clock.
Yeah, my thought was it'll keep us out of the busiest times at 441 experiencing. So it might just help reduce, you know, again, as Linda said, residents have expressed some concern. And it's valid when, you know, you're pulling in there with a trailer or something, it's going to take you a little bit to make that turn. And those morning hours can be, can be off.
I think operationally, there's a few things that the town, we've talked, I know that Eric's talked about from DPW's perspective on operationally, how they're going to access the site. It would more often than almost always be from the north. The other thing we looked at doing is because of the legal address of the property might be confusing for folks and they don't know where to go, we've actually created a drop pin at the Gloria Drive entryway. And we would link Apple and Google Map directions on our website and have QR codes that link to that specific address using Google, thank God for Google. 2143-ish Gloria Drive aligns with the location of that driveway. So we would, in the website and any other communication we have to communicate that new location, people would be using that address to find it. And more often than not, for a large majority of the properties in Penfield, would navigate them, maybe not using 441 anyway, just based on that Gloria Drive entry point. So I think there's a few things we can do to try to improve safe access. And we're certainly working with DOT to see what options we have.
And when you say most of the Penfield, right, the choice that we would be using to take things there, you're thinking that you would actually go north up to, would it be Atlantic then?
More than likely, we'd probably be.
Or Sweets Corner?
Yeah, I mean, more than likely, we'd probably end up coming in, you know, from Atlantic, just being the, kind of the centralized east-west road within the town, you know, and then turning south onto Gloria Drive. I can't say that never, but it's going to be unlikely that unless we're doing something, you know, just around the corner on 441 for the state on an off chance, that we would, that it would be more convenient to come in from that corner. More than likely, if we're coming in from anywhere else, we're probably going to be coming in from the north end, heading south and avoiding that intersection ourselves anyway.
What's at that intersection? Is it a four-way stop? Is it a two-way stop up at the Atlantic?
It's a, at Atlantic and Gloria is a.
Stop sign.
It's just a T intersection.
Two-way?
Two-way stop on Gloria stops on both sides. Atlantic's a three.
Gloria has to stop. Okay, good. So the trucks would have to stop.
Well, Atlantic, the north end is the.
To make that.
Atlantic is, Atlantic's a, I mean, Atlantic's a straight through. There's no stop. It's only where Gloria comes to Atlantic as a T.
Right, so if you're going northbound on Atlantic or on, I'm sorry, on Gloria, and the trucks are going back to, they're going to make the left.
Yeah, you'd have to stop and then turn, turn left, yes.
That's good. That's what I was curious.
And there's plenty, and at that intersection, there's plenty of site distance. So you can see up and down Atlantic either way, quite a ways.
Any, like, how many trucks are we talking about in a day, in a week? Because again, we're still in that nice rural.
Yep.
Area that I'm concerned about.
The, so I can say the number of cars that we've been kind of counting with the temporary drop off relocated back here behind Town Hall has been varying from 19 to 25 a day.
Per day?
Granted, we've had, you know, really nice weather, it's been popular. But that's been at least the numbers that we've been seeing back here behind Town Hall.
Okay, okay. And that's the residents dropping off from 19 to 25 a day? If, if we are using our bigger Penfield trucks to take things or to take cleanup, right? A tree fell down, we've got limbs, take it over there. Those big trucks, how often would those be going down Atlantic to Gloria?
Hard to tell, yeah.
I know.
It really depends. I mean, we had this passed earlier this week with the wind. There was a tree that came down on panorama. We ended up having to send a truck out there to clean that up, I think Monday night or Sunday night with the wind. There ended up being a tree that came down. We went out, we cleaned that up on Tuesday. I think it was one or two truckloads to do that. Other than that, there's been nothing this past week that we've actually had to do. So there may be weeks and stretches where there's nothing. There may be a lot of our tree work, we tend to do in between, in the winter months, kind of in between, you know, snowstorms.
Okay.
Well, one.
The reason I ask is because as much as I like the idea of not getting onto that 441 with the traffic pattern, there's something to be said that you're on primary roads. You know, you're on main, main thoroughfares versus the Gloria Road going north. That is, again, the rural section of our town where in, especially in the warm weather, people are biking, people are walking. So that's my concern, that there's, you know, it's what is the smartest way to go? Is it to use the primary roads?
So one of the things we talked about too was just trailers and, you know, in terms of the safety issue. And do we eliminate trailers? We probably don't, but maybe we eliminate contractors.
Or you mean whether you wanted to restrict that to, you know, no commercial vehicles, no dump trailers, you know, a single axle, you know, personal use landscaping, utility trailers acceptable, a personal vehicle with passenger plates, but not a vehicle with commercial plates. You know, those are all options, you know, to be considered.
I would be in favor of considering those options too, so that we can, again, minimize. We know the weather's getting crazy, so.
The other, yeah.
We're going to have more.
The other thing I'll just say is we could change this. So, you know, we don't know how this is going to go until we do it in a sense. So if we need to tweak hours or, you know, add some restrictions.
You know, no final decisions need to be made tonight. It could be kind of tweaked, you know, as we go along.
Yeah.
You know, if we wanted to, you know, minimally, at least change the hours, you know, that's certainly, certainly reasonable. And then if we need to put, you know, place greater restrictions on the actual vehicles or what is allowed or not allowed or the days of the week, you know, that's all doable.
And what is that right now? So if you hire somebody to come and cut a tree down, they can't bring it, the contractor can't bring it to the town unless.
The residents with them.
Right?
Yeah, it was so, it was originally the residents had to come in when they were signing in the office. The residents actually had to come in with the contractor, sign the contractor in, let us know. We've kind of loosened restrictions a little bit by not having, or, you know, throughout COVID, when we weren't having residents come in and sign in and, you know, come into the office more, more so lately if there's been, you know, contractor doing a lot or bringing multiple loads, we've asked them to at least notify us. We can verify the address. You know, occasionally if we see contractors constantly in and out, you know, we've kind of, you know, followed them to see and verify that they're actually coming from a Penfield residence. And if they end up leaving the town, you know, we've told them not that, that they can't be bringing things from out of town back just because, you know, we're willing to, you know, to accept brush.
Is there a wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we can certainly do, I guess, one thought I had, you know, we could even consider some type of, you know, permit application, you know, whether it's a window sticker or, you know, a piece of paper, you fill it out, you know. Someone could come in here, come to DPW, fill out, you know, I'm a Penfield resident, this is my vehicle, this is my license plate, this is what I, you know, want to be doing. You know, we sign a slip and then when they actually come to drop off, you know, here's my thing, I've been approved, I'm a Penfield resident, I've proven everything. You know, that could be, I guess, a potential idea.
Well, two things that come to mind is, one is now if it's out east, it's away from the building, it's away from where there's a lot of people. You know, I hear that occasionally people are coming and dropping off that aren't residents. And, you know, whether that's true, I don't know to what level. But I would feel like being out there, it might be more enticing for somebody to, you know, hey, we'll go to Penfield because it's on a rural road and out of sight.
No matter what.
Too much to try to manage that at the site?
I think we, I think we will.
Yeah, no matter what, we're still going to man the site, no different than we do now, you know, behind Town Hall, no different than we are doing at DPW. You know, we'll do our best to do that. It would have, you know, either a swinging gate or something, you know, out at the roadside. So during our off-hours, it's actually closed, there's no access to come in, you can't just drive around it either.
I know for quite a while at the drop off here, when you'd send out the cards, right, it would say proof of residency required. So I know when I'd go, I'd always have my license ready. Is it, I mean, can we kind of follow that same path to start and see?
Yeah.
There could be a sign-in sheet, they have to show ID with their, and then they're signing in, you know, it's, they're signing off on the fact that, where they live.
Yeah.
So we have a little time to set policy tonight. We just want to get the IMA done to kind of move things forward and we can kind of keep.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Before we do that, how disruptive, how negative has it been having it back there? I, you know, I'm not here on a day-to-day basis, so having it there, what has it been, two weeks maybe?
Two weeks today.
Okay.
I can't say that I've gotten any complaints or issues. We've been, I mean, here being a paved parking lot, we've been cleaning everything up at the end of the day and then running the sweeper through to try to get anything that's loose. There's a little confusion the very first day and some material got lost.
So I'm sorry.
Form and getting it cleaned up. But I can't say that I've heard any complaints from anyone that uses that parking lot for Little League or anything else in the evenings.
So sorry, I was going to maybe ask a question that Lynn is going to ask that I was thinking, but because I asked it, why not do it here versus Gloria Drive and?
I think one of the biggest issues is right now Brighton has been gracious enough to help us in taking the material. However, we will not be getting, we would never be able to get any mulch back for the, as a resident give back by bringing it to them. They don't even get the mulch. They work with a third-party company that will kind of grind and then take all of the material themselves. So, you know, Brighton's being gracious enough to assist us kind of in the meantime, but we wouldn't be able to. Yeah, I mean, we've got a, and we're fortunate, we've got quite a bit of mulch up for residents right now. I don't want to necessarily take advantage of that and, or cause an issue and have them say, we're not going to take any more. Or by the time we do run out of mulch, you know, I'm sure residents are going to call, wondering if we have any.
We don't want to overextend our welcome.
All right, I was thinking more of a contingency of if this, if we do this and we're at Gloria Drive and we didn't think of that. And oh no, it is worse and we, whatever that is.
Could you come back to this?
Could you come back here as a, okay, this is not working?
I would think so.
That was more my ideas, is a contingency, because I want to make sure.
Yeah, it hasn't been a issue for staff and us coming and going, it hasn't been a.
Yeah, I've been checking in with Brighton occasionally.
Couple of times we've pulled through after hours, where I see their brush in the back of their truck and they're driving through. But it's at 4:30, so it's after the timeframe anyway, but.
I think, I think the only time that there was any dropped off when we weren't there was last Wednesday during Juneteenth. Some not realizing that we were off for the holiday.
Oh, yeah.
But with that and the heat, Little League and everything got canceled that evening anyway. So it really didn't cause any issues or any problems with the parking lot.
Have, with interactions, have your folks, have they been saying, hey, we're only here temporarily, next time you come or whatever? Have, with interactions, have your folks, has, have they been saying, hey, we're only here temporarily, next time you come or whatever, you're gonna?
Yeah, so a number of people are stopping in the office, they pull up to DPW, they still don't, we've got a sign saying the brush drop off is behind Town Hall. Tim turns the sign on for me every single morning, turns it off every afternoon. You know, any of the phone calls we've gotten, any of the walk-ins saying, where do I go, what do I do? We've explained it's temporarily at Town Hall, you know, that if, if and when that changes, we'll put something online, we'll change, you know, signage, we'll, we'll make that, that clear to residents.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I like Linda's idea, I think as long as there's kind of a bailout clause, if something happens that we weren't expecting or, you know, didn't see.
So if we can just document these things we've talked about so that we know, you know, we're checking into the signs and we can share that as Residents Enquire. We're checking the signs, we're looking at the hours, we're checking the residency, so that we've got that list to make sure that we're doing this as safely, as transparent as possible, that, that would be great.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we need a resolu-, all right?
I'd make a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution for an IMA in the school district for the next pledge session.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote please, Sue.
Barry.
Aye.
Lean House.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Taglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the New York State Consolidated Funding Application, Carrie.
That is me. So this, at the end of July, which now is coming at a rapid pace, the, the state's consolidated funding application is, the applications are due. This is the centralized portal for many state agencies and various funding programs. So after participating in the, a couple of the online presentations, attending the in-person overview, we've put together some of what we think might be the most relevant grant funding opportunities for us to pursue and wanted to get the town board's input or ideas on, you know, in terms of, there's one that's already sort of been assembled from last year that was not awarded. We do have some feedback from DEC, that would be the MS four mapping project. That's this one here, and I'm gonna, let me download that because it's not very nice to look at. So what we thought we would, for that one, that's a fairly easy lift in terms of reapplying. The documentation from last year can be reused and tweaked as needed. And so we would, we would say that's a pretty easy one to go after. And I just want to, I'll pull that up in a moment.
While you're pulling that up, so one of the items and reason why we're asking for that, that's mapping our storm and sanitary sewer systems. So right now we have it on our GIS, we kind of have a general idea of location, that would be actually hiring somebody to go out and get rim and invert elevation. And that's a requirement coming in the new MS four permit. So in the Stormwater DEC EPA regulations, they just passed a new permit this year. We've got five years to get our systems and mapping upgraded. So that's why we're looking now is, yeah, it's five years out, but it's gonna take us a significant amount of money and time to, you know, get to that higher level of, of mapping for, so we know our storm sewers, we can do capacity analysis. You know, we know the size of pipes, we can also do it like a conditions assessment while we've got the manholes open. Look at the condition of the pipes, look at the, the manholes, catch basin structures, and then you can, you know, plan out long-term for DPW for, you know, maintenance of existing infrastructure as well.
Right, so that one's a, if you will, if you're free of the, the reference, it's a sort of a no-brainer for us to pursue that funding. Then what we want to look at is, you know, other, and we utilize the comprehensive plan recommendations as a source for what other projects should we be pursuing? There's funding available through New York State Department of State, their Smart Growth program to provide money for zoning code updates. This is something that we've been sort of doing piecemeal over the last couple of years that I've been here. However, there is a big benefit to doing sort of an overhaul of zoning at one time versus doing it one section at a time or one district at a time. And so we would look at doing, making this application, and if we're successful, there's other, another funding stream that we might look for in the fall to help offset our out-of-pocket costs because zoning codes, really the best case scenario is when you're doing a major overhaul is to have an outside consultant that specializes in zoning code. It's a little bit science and a little bit art, and it's a lot of public engagement. And there are several consultants in our area that have done lots of zoning codes, so there's, you know, wealth of knowledge in our area, but it's not cheap.
So that's the cost, it's a cost of?
Of consultant.
Okay.
We were trying to understand what that was, yes.
Exactly, okay.
No, we're not trying to give me a, a boost of any kind.
What's involved here, I was thinking.
So the consultant, and I'll give you sort of a order of magnitude, just to give you like, it's a little sticker shock. Village Fairport is doing its zoning code overhaul, and it's, the village has twenty-five hundred properties. A hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so having, having a consultant background sort of, one fifty is probably the, and maybe two hundred is maybe more appropriate to, like a ballpark. So looking at ways to sort of chip away, and we can be creative in terms of how we pursue the grant funding through Smart Growth through the state, and then look at other funding streams that could be potentially available. And so we're trying to, you know, sort of get the money from as many places as we possibly can, that's one. The other high priority item that you'll see here is the, the third option, and I'd say this one would also be another viable one is a, a climate adaptation plan through the, the DEC's Climate Smart Grant Funding Program. They have, you know, we're estimating just based on other communities and their costs, a total project cost, this again for consultant. Hiring would be around the one-twenty mark to prepare a plan. It could be more, it could be less depending on the scope of our climate action plan or climate adaptation plan here in the town. This is, you know, sort of identified in our comprehensive plan. And so we're looking at a, a match amount that would require us to match half of whatever we ask for. I always want to caution folks, I mean, a lot of times we want to, we ask for less because we have to pay less out of pocket, but then it sometimes will limit, you know, the, the level or skillset of the consultants that will go after the project, so.
And so how much have you really?
And then sometimes it's a, you get what you pay for.
Yeah.
So you gotta be a little bit careful, you want to be mindful and, and, you know, you know, you're not trying to play on the Taj Mahal, but you also need to, you know, right-size the project.
Right, and, and with all of these so far that you've talked about, we're not talking about something that we live with for the next two years. These are long-term.
Correct.
You know, plans, so.
So you want to do them right?
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think with respect to the Climate Smart Funding and the Climate Adaptation Plan, there'd be some thought, and I'm working, I'll be working with Sarah Waterman, our sustainability engineer, to sort of hone in on what the focus would be, whether it's, you know, the, the initial phase of town and, you know, operations and climate adaptation and then, and or, and how much do we include community into that? So there's some decisions that we would have to make in terms of the scope that gets put together. And then other projects that potentially could be on the radar, they could be for this year, they could be for next year. The Salt Barn is one, there is money available for salt barn, salt-related improvements, equipment. This might be better suited for us to pursue maybe next year. And, but we want to sort of talk about it or at least put it on your radar. I think just based on the timing with DPW facility next year might be the better time, and I'm looking to Eric to, because we've talked about this already, but.
And MRB has, you know, over the past number of years as we've worked on the design, MRB has, you know, indicated that historically these have been available, they've helped write, you know, the, the grants for them. They know what things, kind of, you know, keywords that help get grants approved, what things don't. You know, and they've, they've indicated that they would, you know, be more than happy to help us apply towards this. You know, whether we, you know, were, I guess, needing the, the funding to do it or not, you know, anything would help in the long run.
Yeah, so I think for this one, we might look at the timing of it and determine whether we can wait till next year, I think we probably can.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's critical right now because really that, the replacement Salt Barn wouldn't be constructed until probably spring of twenty-six anyway. So timing-wise, it, it'd probably be best with, with next year.
Yeah, and then the one last thing I'll say is EST, which is the Empire State Development Corp. or Empire State Development, they have this strategic plan, funding, the maximum award is a hundred thousand. And every time I see Steve Gold, every year I see Steve Golding who works at EST, and he was like, go for the strategic plan. Nobody goes after this money, and every year, no one, no, we get no, we got no applications last year.
I'm looking at the local match and I'm wondering why we're not.
So this is one where it's not, you can't use it for planning, you can't, you can use it for like an area plan, you can't use it for zoning. There's like limitations, but one of the things we've talked about, I've talked about it with the Penfield Business Chamber, is sort of like branding, like sort of a little bit of an identity campaign for Penfield. Culture, anything from a, like from an economic development standpoint, developing a little bit of a, a marketing or branding for each of our primary commercial areas. This is again something that we would be able to go after with, to get a consultant to help formulate and craft that. It could be also designing, you know, sort of like themes for the various areas. And I think, you know, we always sort of joke about, everywhere in town is nice to have like a little bit of a brand. Four Corners has a brand in terms of its historic preservation. Two fifty-four forty-one has a different feel and look, so how do you sort of celebrate those, bring people together? You know, and so it could be an opportunity to sort of bring the business community together in those various areas and really. So as the, I don't know, business liaison, I love this one.
I gotta tell you, I like this one because I think of two of Shadow Pines, of how do we bring that in as a, as something that we have. We don't have a canal, so we don't have the, the nice branding that so many of our neighbors.
I don't want to call out the, you know, the, but Empire Bay and Creek, no one knows it is in Penfield. Everybody thinks it's in Webster.
Perfect point.
And I will tell you, as a twelve-year Penfield resident, when I came to work for the town of Penfield, it wasn't until I saw the zoning map and I was like, ooh, wait a minute, that's in Penfield? I thought that was Webster, and I'm embarrassed to say that aloud, but I am not alone. So I feel like that, that one we could certainly make a go of, I don't think it would be a heavy lift from a preparation standpoint. But I just want to get some feedback, see what, if there's anything that people are jumping off the page for folks.
I think that's a wonderful idea because we do not promote the way we should.
Okay.
It's, it's really important that people understand how great Penfield is, and that's a small investment that will have a lot of bang for the buck.
Yeah, especially for our small businesses, I could see that being so beneficial to them.
Okay. All right, so then if, I mean, do you have objections for us for pursuing?
So what did we decide about the Salt Barn, are we gonna take that one out?
I think we would take that one out.
Okay.
The MS four mapping, I will say, is a, like, that one's almost done already in terms of like, we need to get some letters of support out the door. I'll, what I would do is maybe I can review the, the requirements of the application a little bit more carefully and see just how complex they are to put together and maybe provide that feedback to the town board. And if you have to pick between zoning code or climate action, then I would maybe leave that up to you to determine, determine which one to go for this year.
Okay, help me understand, so let's say we say, okay, there's five here, we're gonna approve, we want to move forward with pursuing this funding for four of them, and we get them all, they say, yep, you got it all, then what?
Well, we got a lot of coordination. Yeah, so with the match money, we would, we, we, yes, so.
That's what I want to understand, that moving forward.
Now, you could always be awarded and decide not to, it's never a good idea, we never want to get money and give it back. Never want to give the money back, so I would only want to go for the ones that we feel comfortable. I, I think two of the, like, the Smart Growth, the Climate Smart Planning and the, the zoning code or, and under the Smart Growth, those are things that have been identified as a priority in our comp plan, so it's an implementation, implementation item. We don't have to do it right now, we could wait, you know, so that's, I mean, I think we're gonna be talking about that potentially, you know. Budget season is coming up, so this is a good time to be talking about this.
Right, because that's, that's what I don't understand or know yet is, okay, it's great where, if we get the funding, but then where is our, our local match coming from, where are those dollars coming from?
Yeah.
We need to know what we've got.
And that's some of the stuff I've included in my budget is the Climate Adaptation Plan, talking about traffic active transportation plan money, so as budget stuff comes around, that's some of the things. Different grant cycle, but also looking at, you know, having money in our budget as well. So obviously, you know, that's something to discuss with the board is which items, we may not be able to take them all on at once, but, you know, just to know that we are trying to implement the, the comprehensive plan and these are the items that, you know, we're starting to look forward on. Some hopefully we can get through grants, others will have to allocate, you know, in our regular budget line to handle these.
You may have said this when I stepped out, but how quickly do you have to spend the money?
It depends on the grant program, like, so for example, the LaSalle's landing funding that we got last year through CFA for the bathroom facility, we have five years to spend, like, would they give you five years to start and finish the project? But that's an implementation project that's, you know, brick and mortar, so they give you a little bit more time. I think each of these programs might have a different implementation timeline. Usually there's extensions built into them so that if a project's going over, taking a little bit longer, they usually want you to spend the money, so just, it's more of a housekeeping and a budget-keeping thing for them. But I can also look into that a little bit further and figure out in terms of, you know, the, what the, what the lift is.
I, I, from my perspective, I do think all of these have a place and would be smart to pursue because our local match, based on what we can get matched, is a strong argument. But I do want to know, do we, you know, do we have this money, do we have the funds, where do they come from? What do we lose, what isn't in somebody's budget? So that, that's my.
Right.
What are your thoughts?
Yeah, agreed. Do they have to be built into your specific budgets?
So they don't have to be, like, so they could be, it could be something that if we are rewarded, then it could be a budget transfer from general fund and we could double, and I'm happy to check with the finance director to, to determine that we have more than enough, you know, fund balance to accommodate this.
I would say that, I mean, in the totality of this money, you know, considering it's a twenty-four million dollar budget, it's not a lot of money per se based on, I mean, I think we have the money if we get something awarded to, to pursue it or complete it.
Yeah, two of them are such minute amounts.
Yeah.
Sure, yes, yeah, so I think for sure, just the MS four funding and then the EST strategic plan, we could pursue those and with a, you know, minimal out-of-pocket contribution.
All right, what do you need from us?
So we don't need any, oh, I, no, forgive me. What I've done is I prepared a generic, because I wasn't sure if we were gonna be able to decide for sure and something might pop up during the course of the application process that like, ooh, wait a minute, this may not be the right thing for us to do right now. I prepared a generic resolution for the town board for the July legislative session saying we support the consolidated funding applications and we have funds, funds available to meet the local match that may be required. This way it provides as part of the application sort of an extra level of strength and we know that town board is behind the application.
It's a good idea.
So if you would authorize me to, I'd be happy to.
I would like to make that movement.
Okay, and then I'll prepare it.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, vote, Sue, please.
Barry.
Aye.
Lean House.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Taglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, we'll move. You want to keep rolling into ARPA funding, Carrie, for me? Thank you. So we still have time, but you keep making progress on this?
Yes. So I, so the, the funding that remains in ARPA is somewhere in the five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar mark-ish, five-fifty, five-forty, somewhere there. The funds have to be committed by the end of this year and they have to be expended by the end of twenty-twenty-six. And so it's not a, so I think, and I also want to make sure that the town. And so, it's not a, so I think, and I also want to make sure that the town board did receive, I know, I know Candace is not here, but she did share an email with the town board and with staff that expressed her preferences so that could be reflected or incorporated as part of your discussion tonight in review. Again, no, every final decision have to, does not have to be met tonight, but if you had strong feelings.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
I know when, when you sent it out, when you sent the consolidated list, and I love that it went to every department, had two to get their in, input. That's outstanding. And I could see the different things there. So, I went back and I looked and it's, you know, what's the intent of these ARPA funds? And it really is to say, what do we learn from COVID? What, what happened? What went wrong with this epidemic that we should put in place so it doesn't happen again or we're better prepared for it? So, it's interesting to think of it in terms of that way and then take a look at it and say, we also want to make sure that whatever we do has the highest impact for the greatest number of people. That's how I looked at all of these is, okay, is there something if, if it does happen again, if we're faced with a similar situation or we can't communicate with people or we've got just a, an awful situation, are there things in here that would say, okay, that would help us? That would benefit. Are there things in here that really provide the biggest bang for the buck? Because it helps so many more people of Penfield and it really has an impact. So, that's kind of how I went through it. Not too sure how everybody else went, but how did you want to proceed going through these? Just upvote, downvote?
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, I would, I would defer to, to the, to our supervisor in terms of the best way to proceed. I don't know if there's any that jump to the top of the mind for folks, if you want to sort of come to, if there's.
What if we just went through it? Like, for example, for the first one, we could say the repaving, we're gonna take that off because it's probably close being done.
Almost.
So, we did finish the, we did finish paving that parking lot today. However, the money was not allocated in the, or put into the budget for this year for that parking lot. It was the intent that the project would be completed. Once the final numbers came in, all of the invoices to know exactly what that, what the true cost was, that it would be at a budget amendment to actually appropriate from fund balance back to, to one of the, for the true cost of that.
So, it's still entirely possible that the, that the board could utilize the money towards that.
And is that the, is that what it came in at?
That, that was the estimate based on the, kind of the square footage and quantity of material.
But have you, do you know what it is now that it's done or is it?
I won't get invoices for another couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
I mean, some of them I'll get probably later this week.
So, it sounds like you leave that one on for further consideration.
Sure.
Sure.
How about the next one? Because it's similar.
And this number, at the time, trying, I, I really had no idea. Had gotten updated, met with a company that I know does prevailing wage work to at least get a quote from them. Based on that, their quote for the town hall parking lot, kind of Veterans Memorial Parkway, Columbus Crossing, the parking lots over at Little League as well as backed by the Dolomite Lodge, we're looking at closer to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So, I can up, should I up?
Kind of resealing the asphalt rejuvenator sealer for those.
There is, they did send me a piggyback contract that I would have to look into a little bit further and would certainly want to review with our town attorney if that was something that we were interested in, given that the dollar amount is well over the threshold for a normal public works bid project.
And I think when we talked about this, was we had this estimate in here and then it was like a week or two later that Eric got the updated number. You could scale back the location of sealing, but if, you know, so you could scale it back.
They did break it out by town hall and kind of the roadways to and from. And then did Little League and those parking lots as its own, as well as the parking lots backed by Dolomite Lodge as its kind of third separate component. So, if you added all three up and did everything, it was a hundred and sixty. If you wanted to do, I believe, just town hall and Columbus Crossing, Veterans Memorial for your entrance roadways, I think the number was ninety.
Eric, how often should that type of maintenance be done? I mean, it's like, it sounds different than what you do in your typical residential driveway.
We, we typically do not seal our parking lots. We have in the past done a chip seal project or process, kind of the, the same oil and stone that we do in neighborhoods. It tends to cause some issues with just foot traffic and dragging that stone in and then scuffing up floors. You know, compared to, it's a little different, kind of walking on it and then tracking it right into the buildings versus driving on it on a roadway. That had been done in the past with a number of our parking lots. The, we, I want to say it was probably six or seven years ago. We did seal the community center parking lot with the intent that it was to buy time prior to a full mill and repave, you know, capital project. That helped, you know, for a number of years, but, you know, it was past the point of needing to, to be able to just do that again. Did require a full mill and repave.
So, why do you want to do this now?
This, so I believe this was on the.
You didn't put.
I, yeah, I, no, this was on the list. I just wanted to update and some of the, as you see and read, some of the numbers.
Change from what was in there.
What was originally put together by, you know, town board members, just to show kind of true and accurate numbers.
It's not until we get to.
I think, I think originally repaving of the community center and resealing of the town hall were a single item. And we wanted to break those out and then show what the true cost would be for each.
Okay, so you being the head of the responsible department, I mean, what's your feeling on this? It sounds like this isn't something that you would have done in the past.
I think it would benefit the, the, the parking lot and it would help the longevity. The number seems high to me, but we're, there's very few companies and contractors that do sealing work under prevailing wage rate. I, I know that this particular one, it's a, it's a asphalt rejuvenator, so it will help kind of impregnate the asphalt and, and help with extended life above and beyond just a normal driveway ceiling. But I'd need to, I guess I would like to run some numbers to see what the actual cost for an anticipated mill and repaving would be comparatively.
And I know this is one that Candace, I think it was actually, she wrote that this is something she does support. So, I guess we leave it on, get more numbers, further conversation.
It's gotta be done at some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the next one was updating carpet or steam cleaning the carpet in town hall. I'm not sure that, that, we didn't touch that number. I think replacing carpet would be a higher, a higher number than this.
I mean, does it make sense not to have five thousand dollar items on here? I mean, all these little, you know what I mean? Some of these things have to be, I look at it, it depends what bucket, you know, the money comes from, but.
Yeah, this might be fall under general maintenance.
Carpet and steam cleaning need to be done at some point.
Three and four could fall under.
Yeah.
General maintenance.
What I think I'm gonna do is just to, they won't go away.
Keeping that spirit of, what did we learn from the pandemic?
Sure.
And are we, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think cleaning's really.
Well, I, I don't, I was thinking, I don't look at it maybe the same way and it's fine. I just look kind of allocation of money. But I did think that, that you could use the money for outside things like parks. Because clearly we learned, you know, we were forced outside, which actually turned out to be a great thing for people.
That's a really good point, yeah.
And so, in my head, I was thinking, okay, well, you could kind of focus on things that help residents outside, whatever that might be.
Yeah, this, the next one is natural gas backup generators for pump stations. I believe the eighty thousand dollars is for one.
One?
Yeah.
Just so.
This does sound so important to me, though. So, walk us through, is this something that we need to do? That's already in a plan that we do one a year or two a year or something?
Or is there a location that it makes better sense to do one at as opposed to one of the other twenty-three sites?
So, part of the, the DPW budget request that was just finished did have this indicated for, you know, next year's budget to at least put a placeholder to start, you know, trying to incorporate these. We have changed the town's design criteria and specifications that any new developments, any pump stations that are to be installed and paid for by developers are to require generators from the start so that we're not having to come back and spend eighty thousand dollars plus, you know, on each station after the fact ourselves. But with that said, we've got twenty-four, twenty-four, soon to be twenty-six pump stations and five of them have generators. Not all of them are the same size. Not all of them are the same capacity. Some of them, you know, would certainly are more prone to power outages, given their location, especially along Creek Street. A lot of it's, you know, aerial rear yard electric lines. There's a lot of mature trees when the wind blows coming up through the valley. You know, there ends up being power outages. So, I would say some of those would be higher priority, our pump stations along Creek Street. There's others where we've had, there's just higher flows coming into them and the, I guess, the frequency of the runtime, the longer runtimes, but also more frequency, more cycles per day. With the idea that the longer, the longer duration that they are out of power, the more likely to actually cause a backup and, and damage to, you know, residential or even commercial property. So, trying to kind of factor those in and come up with somewhat of a priority list that may change slightly, you know.
Right. And if we look at this risk analysis, right, if we were to apply a risk analysis, we would say, alright, what's the risk of it happening? And what's the impact if it does happen? Well, if the impact that these go out and we don't have a power, I mean, I guess common sense is that's bad.
We, and we do have on all of our stations, we do have the ability to plug in a portable generator so that it's not concern over no way to be able to, you know, continue to handle that sewage coming in. However, you've got to drive the generator over, you've got to plug it in, you've got to turn it on and then you may need to take that and drive down.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say.
I certainly think that it would be beneficial and important and above and beyond this, we'll be including that, you know, with future budgets.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's gotta, does everybody else agree?
But the number could be more than eighty, that's just the.
That's one.
That's one is a placeholder.
That would be for, for one, at least to.
And some might be less, some might be more.
Correct. I mean, some of our smaller E ones may need a, might be more of like a five to ten, you know, KV generator. Some of them, you know, our, our bigger stations are, you know, eighty to a hundred, a hundred and fifty at our Route two fifty pump station. So, they, they also vary in size and certainly are gonna vary in, in price.
Is there a number that you have in your head with, you know, how many stations would really put us in a, a good spot? In other words, between planning for budget and these, these funds, is it, you know, is it five?
All twenty-four. Yeah, I mean, with, with that and even some of the state's requirements and I guess, you need restrictions on natural gas service. There, there's gonna be some complications with that as the, I guess, natural gas services are gonna be phased out or no longer. No new gas services will be able to be installed at some point in the future.
So, I, I'll just say that I think, I'll just add that, yeah, we need it and we could probably add this number up. And you could argue this is part of our climate action plan. I mean, clearly weather events are happening in a bigger way, so we need to prepare for that and this does that. So, yeah.
That's, that's a.
And you could add, add another zero and to that number and spend the entire thing on these and still not cover all of them.
Oh, yeah, this could go as high as like one point five million.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right.
Alright.
I agree, Linda, that it should be high in the list. Okay.
Next one's decorative banners. I think we could, I was gonna bring it out without even, I was, after talking about like life and death situations, I feel like this is an easy one.
Seven. And I think you said that in the comments, this portion of this has been done, right? And for number seven? Hard services at Greenwood Park are already planned.
Uh, yes. So, there's, there's money in the budget for Greenwood Park for this year. Tim and I are gonna be working on actually trying to finalize the bid specifications for that in the next week or two. We, I want to say it was two years ago, three years ago, that Harris Whalen Park was done. And as part of the 2025 budget request for next year, we're incorporating the courts here at Veterans Memorial. So, I, I would think that while it could be allocated, we do have money in the budget and anticipate it as well.
I still do like add shade canopy and I would like to add that if we, if we consider that, that we add a shade canopy at the library where the benches are in front, because right now there's nothing that covers people's from rain or hurricane. Again, still not as important as the other one, but perhaps we still consider. Any other thoughts on that one?
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna double the number just because we're doing it in.
Sure, sure. This one is, was, this was one that I added on early. And you know how we have these stations here? We have one over in the community center. The thought was, was to put them where the drinking fountains are at the lodges. Not at every park. If we don't have a lodge or a pavilion there or existing plumbing services, we wouldn't do it. But just again, that idea of people are outside, they have a way to get water, fresh water, filtered water.
We incorporated the new bathroom over here, incorporated one there and I think.
Oh, oh, you did, oh, okay.
Yeah, outside the new bathroom has that.
And again, whether ARPA or some other place.
And, and yeah, I'd say even, I guess, our facilities department, as any of the existing drinking fountains in all of our, in any of our facilities have, you know, needed service or needed replacement, we've been replacing them with the refillable bottle stations as well. Additionally, this was something that we did share, Mark Carey and I shared with Bergman to incorporate as part of the clerkhouse. I don't think they mentioned it, but looking at the plans, I could see that they were incorporating these, I guess, into the plan for, for their drinking fountains as well.
Very good. And I want to correct myself. I didn't, this was Candace's idea and then I piggybacked off of this idea to say, so somewhere further down, you're gonna see it. This was her idea, but I do think we have them already at these locations and it was to add them to the parks. So, it's, we, we can merge those.
Okay.
Okay, good.
So, do you want me to grade out for ARPA purposes since it's being addressed in, or do you want me to keep it in here?
If it's being addressed, then I don't. Take it out?
Take it out, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd say if there's any particular location where there isn't one that you would like to see one in.
Rothvoss? Harris Whalen?
I know there's a drinking fountain at Rothvoss. I don't think it's got a bottle station.
Okay. I would, I would look into Rothvoss and Harris Whalen. And where else do we have where there's plumbing already? You know, I mean, like some of our.
We have one at Dolomite. We don't have, is there a drinking fountain?
Dolomite.
I don't think there is one at Dolomite.
So, but again, maybe we take that.
I mean, if, yeah, if there's, I was just gonna say, if there's any specific locations, that could be part of the budget discussions to make sure that that's incorporated.
Act number ten, compost bins. Yeah, I think that's very, I don't, yeah, I think, I would say that we take that one out. Great idea. I just don't know that it's broad enough.
The other thing we could look at potentially to as a grant opportunity through the Genesee Regional Market. I never say that acronym correctly. I just butchered their poor name. But that's one to support agriculture. And so, I know past the community gardens, you know, the children's garden, there's been other past awards. So, that could be incorporated into a future application through that organization.
That's a good idea. Can never go wrong with planting more trees, can you?
I know.
I don't know if that's part of the ARPA, but it's up to you guys.
Yeah.
I'm ready to move down to sewer lining, which seems to be the next kind of important one, but.
Oh, yeah, right.
The caution tape is gone.
Yeah, we can take out 13.
Okay.
So, what do we say? 11, 11, 12, and 13, we just kind of put down?
Yeah.
Fill those into a budget hopefully.
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this one, I think we can maybe just remove because it wasn't, it was really just a, it wasn't a.
The same is gone.
It's a completed project.
It is.
The railings are up. They've got to replace the doors going into PCTV down in the basement. Otherwise, we're done with this.
I'll put a note.
Yep, thank you.
In theory, hang on one second.
Do you want to talk about sewer lining, Eric, or mention it?
We, so I know $800,000 has already been allocated towards doing the Kirdon Place pipelining. We can certainly allocate more. I know Alex is working on, he's had a few different areas already completed. He's trying to work on getting the next few set up to make sure what the true cost is. You know, we get an estimate, but then oftentimes the estimates are anticipated costs, including, you know, heavy cleaning. If they don't need to do as much, you know, they only bill us for the work that's actually done. There's a few areas that he previously had some concerns about, but has been able to do some other things to address them and do some spot repairs rather than needing to do full sections. So, we're kind of whittling away at the 800,000. If we want to allocate more, we certainly can. That would be, I guess, up to the board.
Okay, so as the DPW director, if you had to choose between this and the generators for the pump stations, or to do a split between the two, what would you think would be the wisest thing to do?
Probably the.
You on the spot or?
I think, I think because we've allocated so much towards the lining already, I would like to add, to, I would, my preference would be a generator.
Okay.
To at least kind of divide and conquer a little bit.
We might get a discount if we buy more than one generator too, would we? Maybe? Just a thought. If we up that number.
I know. Buy one, get one.
That'd be nice.
Get my tongue on that one.
Eric, I'm kind of looking ahead, sorry. But like, item 47 talks about the pump stations again and would reduce potential for backups indoor maintenance. That's totally separate than anything we're talking about for.
I don't remember which 47 is.
Pump station grinder pump upgrades.
Reduce potential for backups and/or maintenance.
Yeah, you got to take a, to let Alex understand this.
Yeah, so that's a little bit more of a changing the pumps that are functioning kind of day in and day out. However, at the same point, if you don't have power, it doesn't matter what pump you have in the ground, it's not going to work. So, I would say generator first.
Gotcha, okay.
That's dealing with.
That was good to go forward to that one.
Yes.
Flushable wipes and all that that keep plugging up the, putting in cutters to cut up the flushable wipes so they don't get plugged up every day.
Okay, so what do we decide sewer lining? Maybe we, because we've been working that, that we'll gray it out or do we leave it for?
Yeah, we can.
You can leave it for now, but I would say the, it'd be a lower priority item.
Than the other, okay. This one, this one I will say I put in there. And the thought was that with that property that we've learned is contaminated, they're removing water from it. The idea was to be able to take that land, plant some native species, and help native species, Mother Nature, clean it up. I started looking into brownfield. Brownfield I saw were two categories, right? It was for old buildings or just people that abandoned type of things. And there were some brownfield opportunities for land that has been contaminated. So, that's what I started looking into, seeing if there was a match there. This one is, I don't know if it's truly ARPA. And maybe we continue to research opportunities. I know it would also involve having to purchase the land from the county. And I don't know that all of that could happen prior, that we could even make the commitment to it by the end of this year.
Right.
I don't know if legally the county.
Would, exactly.
Well, I think because it's facilitating the old landfill, they've bought the land as a basically a buffer for that. And then they've got monitoring wells on it that they've got to report back to DEC. So, I don't even know if.
If we could.
They could sell it just based on the.
This was my magic wand.
I don't know if the main.
My ability either.
Yeah.
Knowing it's contaminated or has, you know, potential for.
Some familiarity with the brownfield. I mean, that would work if you were to develop it, but I don't think residents want it.
No, no, you can make a conservation easement out of it.
Okay.
Brownfield does not have to, this much I did research, brownfield does not have to be that you're going to develop the land. One of the options would be. The problem that I've saw so far is that I couldn't get through because of course nothing's in one place, was that if you utilize the, you get the funding for the brownfield because of the contaminated land and you're looking at a conservation easement, they're looking for more of that being privately owned versus it being a public. So, that's the one part I didn't get through.
There used to be a funding stream for municipally owned property that needed remediation. It's not been funded in a number of years.
Okay.
And so, the, I have some, I did my own, a little bit of research on that topic as well.
Okay, good.
So, I'm happy to share that with you. The funding streams right now are focused on redevelopment sites. And so, they're typically located in urban centers or neighborhoods or old industrial areas for redevelopment purposes.
Yeah.
And the benefit is tax credits.
There you go.
Which doesn't apply to us because we're tax exempt.
This, this was one that, you know, to me, it's, it's almost a personal thing that we have property in our town that is going through that, that, you know, I just want to clean it all up. I just am concerned that I still, and maybe it's working with the county more closely and saying, listen, you've got to keep that buffered. You've got to keep that land buffered, so.
And when you talk to residents in that area and you hear how many believe that there's been health concerns because of that land, like, I think that this is something that needs to stay on the town's radar and for us to take it seriously, that it could be, you know, an environmental threat and a health threat to the residents of the town. And, you know, this might not be the way to go. ARPA might not be the way to go.
I think, I think we need to talk to the county. I also would say that, I don't know if it is contaminated per se. Like, I don't know if it's been defined by that, but maybe that's true. But I think we could explore more through the county. It's their land.
Yeah, I think there are different ways to go about this. So, yeah, it wouldn't.
So, not for ARPA?
Not for ARPA.
Okay.
Okay, what else on this list?
I would be, I, this was mine, recycle bins for trash disposal. I noticed that there's nowhere to put your, maybe unless it's changed, but there's trash bins, but.
It's supposed to be carry in, carry out, isn't it generally at our parks?
There's trash bins. If I, you know, I've been walking the park and I want to throw out a plastic bottle, there's no recyclable. This also then comes with an ongoing cost. So, I would, I don't know what your thoughts are from a park perspective, but I would take this out for ARPA.
And the amount is, I think, low enough that it could be budgeted at 14, probably.
And two, I'd want to get parks, I'd want to get DPW, I'd want to get everybody's perspective on it.
I think one of the biggest concerns is, you know, well, you and I and maybe all of us in this room, you know, would distinguish the difference between what's trash and what's recycling.
That one's false, so.
A number of people don't. And if the trash is full, they're going to go to whatever else is empty. And then it ends up getting commingled and mixed anyway to the point where then everything that is in the recycle bin has to go into the actual trash, you know, as regular garbage because it's already, you know, mixed with other garbage. And we're not sorting that back out and trying to, you know, rinse food waste and whatever else off that can't be recycled.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, scratch that, right? I mean, all these things again could be in a budget at some point, but just to eliminate some of the smaller items for the ARPA discussion.
So, from a, I'll, going to just address the next one. So, our consultant is working on, they've been doing site investigation. They need to, the next step is likely to rent equipment to, to be able to get a closer look up the upper, you know, roof, the barn, yes. For, oh, for barn, forgive me. For the Clark House, that's.
And I think even the Clark House, as we've, you know, heard from, you know, from Bergman and everyone this evening, there's still more to do with the design. I don't know that we're going to be able to have contracts. I don't know that we'll be able to go out for contracts to be able to actually allocate or commit the money by the end of this year anyway.
And the same would be the case for the.
Well, yeah, the same would be, definitely be the same for the barn since.
Correct.
Where we are with the house.
Yes, with the cost, yeah.
We need to take that off. We could not have the commitment.
And the next two, I think, have such limited reach that.
There's already a kayak launch, a seasonal one at La Salle's Landing that gets put in.
It's not the fancy one with rollers and everything else, but it's donated by.
It predates me, but it was donated. I do recall that.
And because it's DEC or if that's the right regulator, we can't just, it's complicated what we can and can't do, right?
We would need permits.
Anytime you're working in on the water.
That, the, around Equate Bay is a, is, the entirety of the bay is a regulated wetland. And there's a 100-foot buffer around the entire perimeter. And in some areas, it's a 300-foot buffer. So, just permitting alone, we couldn't.
Good projects, but I think just the timeframe by the end of the year would be tough for both of those.
All right. So, we can kind of.
There was, there are two for the security cameras at the park. And I can't find the other one. Wasn't there one about having it removed?
It's 34. Yeah, yes.
Oh, 34. So, we could look at 34 and this one together.
And there's also for security cameras at, wasn't there at the rec center?
This is, the 34 says security cameras in community center parking lot?
Right.
I think that suggestion came in from the library or from the community center.
Oh, that would make sense.
Yeah, and then, yes, and then.
That was a department head sent it in. So, just thinking of that, the other one, I think, was an overall.
So, consider it the overall is, yeah, I believe it.
Right.
So, my thinking on this is that when it comes to the reach of this and when it comes to the purpose for the ARPA funding, that this is a good contender also. You know, like Jeff said, when COVID was happening, we could be outside. So, number one, this could potentially, you know, help with extending that time to be able to do that. The other thing is that, you know, we need, in the event that something happens and we're not, our property would be protected, you know, and our parks would be protected. And I think that's, that's important. And I really think that, you know, this is something that should stay in and be considered as well.
I would agree.
Because that.
I would agree with Kevin on that.
Yeah, I agree too. Because the whole idea too about COVID is, is that remote access, right? That you don't, you're not going to come in, you're, to be able to view it from wherever you are because now you have remote access to those cameras. So, I do agree to keep this one on.
I know the supervisor, you've had conversations with Mr. Kreckman and, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Talking about the different, different buildings and different.
Sure. I would say, yeah, just like other items, we need to get this funded one way or the other, make some changes. So, yeah.
And I will tell you that it's not, I don't think it's on here, but if we're talking security, I think cybersecurity and for our web, for our, everything that we house.
Yeah.
Is very important. We've got to find funding for that too. Not on here. Don't know if it's a block for ARPA.
No, it's important. I mean, website redesign is kind of on the radar too, and that fits in there.
Oh, exactly. That is one of them, isn't it? Maybe we can just add it there.
Yeah, maybe, care if you wouldn't mind maybe adding it.
I sure can.
I feel like we're, we're just kind of whittling this down, right? So, we'll end up with a revision.
Yes, we can, we can add that for sure.
And then we don't lose it. We don't lose sight of it.
All right, cybersecurity.
Okay. Anything else on this list?
Oh, here we go. We're going to scroll back.
I don't know where we are.
That's a nice to have.
Excuse me, just for a minute.
I think we can gray that one out. It's.
Okay.
We've got so many on here.
We've already, we've already spent.
Maybe someday we can look for grants or look for it.
We've spent the ARPA money seven times over at this point.
Exactly.
So, I think this next one is one that actually I recommended before I knew the other list. I think this is one that potentially multiple departments could carve out funding through their budgetary process to help offset training. I think it would be beneficial because there's so many new employees. But IPS is the program that all of the departments use to manage their, the permits, applications, code enforcement, inspections of ongoing projects. So, there, but it could be captured somewhere else.
Budget.
It could be a budget item.
Okay.
Survey equipment is mine. That's just an upgrade of ours is 10 years old now and technology's passing us by. I didn't include it in my budget this year. So, coming up shortly, we can discuss that. But just stuff we do for our own survey mapping as well as, you know, helping residents outlook at drainage issues, concerns in their yards and properties. So, it is used as just, as technology advances. They're no longer supporting the software level that we've got. So, I think that could be agreed out as far as an ARPA fund, but I did put it in the budget.
You did put it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The next two were HR recommendations, learning management system pilot. That's a, an online sort of training modules and programs. It would meet, you know, be used to meet the standard requirements for ongoing training and development. But then also it opens up to, I think, thousands of other modules and, and topics that could be a benefitter to town employees.
Jeff, what are your thoughts? This is, these are two, I think, that were your highlighting that you thought were key?
Yeah, remind me of the LMS system.
Yeah, it's the one for the online, the online training. I think Tracy had shared that one with respect to, so we have some like standard, like HR compliance things that you have to do annually. You know, the sexual harassment, the workplace violence in the workplace, things like that. So, that would all be encompassed in there. And then it's also other, like, you know, safety, communication, conflict management. There's other programming in there, training and staff development types of training modules.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pushing for more training in general. So, that's, that fits that. Whether it needs to be in ARPA funding or not, I'll leave that up to.
So, do you want to leave it, just leave it here for other discussion?
Yeah, sure.
And this, this one, identification machine, that's so that the, this actually might be sort of tied or could be folded into the security.
I don't know where we are with, sorry, with key fobs, but this would replace the key fob because the ID would serve as that, right?
Correct. And currently, it would also provide the machine that could be done here. I think right now we get our.
Perrington prints ours for us.
Prints ours for us. And they're not tied. So, everybody has their own ID. And then they have a separate key fob. This would consolidate that. You would have, your key fob would have your, you know, your.
Use your badge.
Badge to get in.
How, how, how do we feel about that cost? Is that a pretty solid?
Yeah, so, so that would be for the actual machine itself. And then, you know, the, at least the number of badges that we would need to get started. Our current key fob readers would accept, you know, we wouldn't need to change all of those on our buildings. They would accept the same RFID chip that would be in, you know, I guess, in a badge itself.
When you say all our buildings, what other buildings would be?
So, the community center, town hall, DPW, our sewer building, the Mac building.
All currently have readers?
Not on every part, not on every single door, but on the main entrance doors, yes.
Okay. So, maybe we do leave this on and maybe just if nothing else, to make sure it stays on our radar and if we find money in a budget or somewhere else. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if Human Resources is planning for that this year outside of this schedule, but.
Can relay that to Tracy.
Yes, she got lined up here.
Yep. Can certainly relay that to her.
I think, I agree. I think it's important. It's not a lot of money, but.
Right.
Right, absolutely.
To have to rely on a neighboring town.
Okay, leave it in. Keep talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, next one was a recreation department request or, or idea, I should say. A bus for transportation for seniors that would offer wheelchair accessibility.
I love this one.
So the, like-
It's a tough one, though.
Yes.
I love it. I, we need something like this. We have a, you know, what we keep hearing, we're aging population. I think it's a great idea. I just, I'm concerned about the ongoing costs. I don't know that we can make all of this happen with the commitment and everything. Obviously, we commit to getting the bus. So could we do that? I don't know. What do you all think, Eric?
It seems like a good grant kind of an item, that maybe somebody would be interested in that too with us, but that would be, but-
ARPA.
I guess I agree, and I, maybe it's not an ARPA. I do think, and I think it was Tim Murphy would want, volunteered or wanted to be part of the committee, and I'm committed to that. I mean, we have an aging population. But I envision some kind of a non-for-profit that, that does that and then maybe supported by the town. I don't know how that looks, but.
Well, we could currently use BRI Penn, right? Where they give volunteers to drive seniors. And there was something going around, too, to try and get RTS.
So one of the things I was going to say, we certainly could engage RTS in a conversation as to what, if there's a rental, if there's a, if there's a partnership opportunity. I don't know if that exists or doesn't. Could you look at, you know, there might be some other options. I think, I don't know, Eric, for the, for this type of a vehicle, I think it then raises the bar for what license you need to operate it.
Depending on the size, the weight, there may be some additional requirements.
In terms of what staff member might be qualified?
Basically, if it is over a certain weight, you'd need a CDL.
Right.
You know, we have CDL drivers where I work.
Sure.
And they, they have to drive the, the larger buses. There are smaller vehicles, though, that can transport people with wheelchairs.
I think that was the intent, was to have a smaller bus that would not require a CDL. But there may be some additional training or insurance requirements that, that we have to be able to do that transportation as well.
How often are we transporting people and where are we transporting them?
We don't.
I think it's primarily through the actual rec programs with the, the-
Day trips.
Yeah, for the, the day trips with the passenger vans.
We, we can talk about it. It seems like if the town did it themselves, it would be complicated and it might. We can look at it more and keep it on the list if you want to.
I'm going to put a note to-
I mean, I don't even know if the demand honestly is there. If, I mean, I know that obviously we have an aging population, but I'm not quite there yet, but I-
Well, I think if you look at the deer numbers, have you ever go over to the community center during the day? That room is full.
Oh, absolutely.
And so it might be that he's looking forward to, to saying, you know, we've got this great population who comes to these deer programs and we're losing some of them because they no longer are driving on their own or have access to a driver.
So if that, if it's, if it's transportation to deer events, that may be different than I, I was thinking. But not to go on a whole tangent, but lifespan provided me, there, I'd like to, there's a questionnaire you can get out to seniors that we may want to use, that lifespan has, to ask the question, what they really want. Maybe this is something that makes sense, but there's a bigger, I guess.
And we could also go back and see if this came up too, right? Recreation park, just, we just all completed that great survey, so this may have also come out of there. I'm trying to remember. So we can get more. I don't, maybe we do take it off ARPA, but we continue to pursue other-
Sure.
Evens.
Yeah, and obtain a little more understanding of how it would be used and that might help dictate the size and what it looks like.
Sure.
Find a partner.
Yeah.
That's just a regular budget.
I mean, there's a few-
I think this is a regular budget item.
Some miscellaneous items.
I think the, I don't know what this is. I think this is a-
I think it's a clerk.
A government service. No, I thought this was-
It's a PCTV?
PCTV.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it was a PCTV. So I don't know if it's a, like, an evaluation of accessibility. I don't remember what this is.
What's that? Which one are you, I'm sorry?
This is a PCTV.
Is it more online functionality?
I think it's wanted to see if we, our online version of our meetings is up to date or appropriate for some more efficient way to do our minutes and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I almost-
And that seems more like a budget item to me.
Yeah.
And I think perhaps going off of what you just said is that it's also looking at what additional services. This is probably something we learned from the, from the pandemic. What more services can we provide on the functionality, too? So that would be good, but maybe it is a budget.
Yeah, and we are, we have entered into the section where these are now town-
Yes.
Department, you know, brainstorming suggestions and ideas. So my, I'm going to grade this one out, correct?
Yes.
And this is for the town clerk's office, and I think-
There'd be a budget.
Yeah, and I think-
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be that related to the purpose of the ARPA funds.
Right.
Request.
And we talked about this one above, again, from a timeline standpoint.
Is Elfeas the first name?
Yes.
I did not know. I learned something today.
Elfeas clerk.
Yes. So I'm sort of in the same vein as the conversation before.
Just logistics.
Yep. Upgraded lighting in the library, and I think it's interior lighting.
Website.
I think that, Eric, this is, there may be other grant funds available for LED lighting upgrades that we could pursue.
Yes. There, there are. There's, and there's various options, whether you're going to try to do a retrofit with existing fixtures or if you were going to do complete brand-new fixtures. There's also RGENE, and I think have incentive rebates, which would bring the, the cost down significantly. Not only to do just the library, but to do the entire community center as a whole. And I think that would be the, it would be cleaner to do that kind of as a separate budget line item rather than trying to incorporate ARPA funding and rebates together.
And some of the environmental initiatives that we're involved in or could potentially be involved in, if we continue with them, it allows us to be eligible for more grant money that could potentially be used for this.
Yeah.
I know Sarah Waterman has been looking into options for-
Clean energy communities.
But, but even specifically for lighting upgrades between town hall, between the community center. I've provided some information to her and she's been looking into grant options for that.
Part of doing bench, part of doing benchmarking and whatnot, then once we benchmark energy, then either through climate smart communities or clean energy communities, then there's, you know, grant funding available to reduce your energy usage.
All right, the website. What do you think?
Didn't we just do that in 2021?
No.
It's a little older than that, but-
Older than that.
Really? I thought it was like ready to tailwind.
Yeah, it was.
I know it's-
That, that might have been by the time it finished, but I think it, it was started a little bit prior to that.
I think that's when it went live, was 21.
Maybe.
I think it probably took a couple of years to build or go through. I started at the end of-
So I think it's important. I mean, I'd keep it on the ARPA list. Again, if it's not through ARPA, it'll have to get funded at some point through some means, through budget.
I mean, whether, whether a full rebuild or if it were just, you know, adding additional things on to, to make it more, I guess, accessible and be able to do more things online rather than just getting directions to then come in and do it in person.
Okay, any more thoughts on that? Getting to the end here. How many lines on that sheet?
You don't want to know.
I think we're in the forty to fifty.
I mean, there's only so, so much money. I feel like all these little smaller items, anyway.
The board has, has talked about Shadow Pines before and didn't want to, since we've already allocated $2 million to Shadow Pines for the current development. I don't know if additional pathways would be something, just to trying to spread the money around, but that's-
But it's not even designed, so we don't know what pathways are.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be a, get into design and get into-
We might have an issue from a timeline standpoint again with this one.
Yeah, that's a good point. Just designing it, waiting for things to happen. But again, I, I think it's a good idea.
Sure. No, I don't, don't lose it.
This was tied to the other.
Yep. So I'm going to leave it there, but we'll consolidate this.
Sure, yep.
And number thirty-five, I don't know if that's, could be a more of a budget item to address or if it's-
I think so.
Yeah.
Next one is tied to, again, the security camera. This came up a couple of different times from a couple of different folks. And then the next few.
Whole list from there.
Oh, wait, guys.
We've got, Eric has nothing cheap. That's the-
Unfortunately.
If you're looking to spend money, he can spend money.
Yeah.
Yes. I think the rule of thumb in, across every community is DPW, across any municipality, can spend all of the ARPA money. And we spend it well.
Eric, describe the Scribner Road project, because you did it to me once.
Yep.
Why, yeah.
So that would be doing a cold and place recycled, as it indicates on there. It actually grinds the existing road, adds some asphalt emulsion into that, that ground gravel to turn it into the equivalent, the equivalent of a New York State DOT asphalt binder material. It puts it back down, you roll it, and then you can actually come through and then just pave a top course over that. So that $700,000, I believe, is the cost of the actual grinding. There, there would be additional funding that would need to be, that we would need to come up with for the cost of the actual top course. But that was to do the entire stretch of Scribner Road from Atlantic up to Plank Road. If not part of this, it's certainly something that, you know, we would still need to do. But it could be, with Embry Road being more or less the, the central point, it could be broken out over a few different years, you know, whether it was this year or next year or next year and the year after to do halves, you know, at a time to be able to at least do that.
And can I ask, the cold and place for Scribner, but not for the others, is there? Apply that to all or is it just unique to Scribner?
So Scribner, I think, would benefit from it. Scribner being an older road that has not had any major improvement projects to that would actually benefit from kind of building up that structural base material, whereas the others have been milled and repaved before, but, you know, would really just need the, the top service that's starting to delaminate and replaced.
Yeah, we have sent out crews out there to do strips of our own milling machine and then it's got right down to the base. So it actually does like Eric said.
Oh, wow.
It needs a lot more of a base.
All right, interesting.
Well, it makes sense to me, but that would spend all our ARPA money in one shot.
And not even, and not even be there.
So I, leaving on for today.
I think it's too big of a thing.
Okay, let's take it off then.
Grade it out, but out of-
Easy decision.
We need to continue to look at.
Okay, anything else we should keep?
Yeah, I mean, I know Baird Road and I at least wanted to put, these are, you know, some of the, the worst roads or I guess the, the roads that are most in need of, you know, projects over the next few years. And we've made, you know, quite a few repairs. We did some bigger spot mill and fill on Baird Road. I know right, you know, by the community center and also by Legacy Circle, you know, earlier this spring. So we at least tried to, to get them repaired as is, but we'll need bigger, bigger improvement projects long term.
Okay, just move down to damaged sidewalks. Like I, the ones that have an X in front of my house, are you doing that this year?
Yeah, so we do have, and my deputy director, Joe, does have, he's got a list for what the sidewalk repairs for the next three years. Kind of broken out by how much the contractor can, you know, feasibly do each year. There are, we're trying to kind of work through different neighborhoods within the intensified sidewalk district because there is a, you know, money that's specifically for those particular sidewalks and those repairs to make sure that we're going through and taking care of any damaged sidewalks, at least starting with the trip hazards. You know, the sunken ones, the, the ones that are problems and then, you know, could go on to what just merely has, you know, small imperfections and cracks.
And before we, we skipped over the Channing Philbrick Walkway Bridge. This is something that is under design and in the process of looking at permitting.
Yep, permitting will shortly or in the near future be working on some of the secret information with that. I'm not sure that we would have all of the permitting approved, especially needing to go to Army Corps of Engineer and New York State DEC that we'd have it all approved and be able to bid it out. The hope is that you could bid it out this fall with construction next year.
So let's take it off.
But no guarantee.
All right, that's great. Yeah, I think the other thing, too, is that we are going to be working either through, to see if there's grant funding or other partnership opportunities that could offset the cost and provide funding support.
What else on this list, Eric, down here that, that jumps out at you being important?
So I think, I think the food shelf sanitary sewer would actually be a very important beneficial thing. We actually had, coincidentally, at the time that we were putting this together, we were having issues with the septic system. That's currently behind the food shelf. There was a tree there. We actually had to take the tree. Unfortunately, had to take down a healthy tree because it was right over top of the actual septic tank to be able to get access to that cover.
Okay, so that's important. We'll leave that out.
Yeah, it's, that septic system is starting to show its age and really would benefit from being tightened into the sanitary sewers.
And just for clarity, for anybody who might be watching this at home, we own the property.
Correct.
So it says, Penfield, if we're not doing a private properties sewer replacement or improvement, it is town-owned property that they utilize.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's right around the corner on-
Right across from DPW.
Yeah, so the building that's adjacent to Dolomite.
Back side of Dolomite Lodge.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just need to-
No, that was a very good point.
Yes, thank you.
We know it's property owned by the town, but the public might not.
What did we say about 43? Remove the pavers?
Oh, yeah, I think this is one, again, it's, it could be a capital improvement project.
I think it's a, it's a want and someday, but not a necessity that-
Especially compared to some of the others.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
And I would, I don't know, Rose's Sanitary or the PCC Gem, I'd personally take it off. The pump station grinder pump is important. I, I would leave that on. I just, we're going to, we've run out of money already, so I don't know.
And, and I'd say some of the, the grinder pump upgrades have been, that was within the budget request for next year, within the sewer department as well. So if it even needs to be graded out on here, given that we've got far more asked than the pot of money, I think that's certainly reasonable. And probably same with the lighting upgrade for town hall, because I know Sarah's working on that for both this building and community center.
Right.
Okay. Let's leave Carrie.
Okay, so what I'll do is we'll take the sort of pared, pared-down list. We won't lose the original. We'll sort of just reorganize and, or pull out these identified ones into a separate table that can continue to be examined and looked at if additional funding, information's needed or clarity on exact costs. You know, those are things that we as departments can gather and bring back to discuss at a future work session.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Sounds good.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, Mark, you're up. Tree-
I'm hopefully much shorter than the last one, but the Tree City is, is kind of the next step in moving towards the Tree City USA designation. So this is kind of the culmination of that. We've been before the board with this local law before. It's gone through the ECC. They're supportive of it. If the board is, is looking to move ahead with it, we've had the public hearing, done that part of it. We still need to do the forestry plan, so the forestry plan would follow and, you know, more information to come along, but.
So what specifically are you looking?
If the board is good with the law as it is written, would be a resolution to adopt.
A motion.
Adopt the local law.
So in looking at it again today, it occurs to me that it's really, it's, it's, it needs a slight refinement, I think, to fit into the code. Because it's really written as just the local law. There's nothing, like, I think we need to say something too about, you know, we're gonna create a new chapter, a new article. Like, all that stuff is missing from the law.
Oh, so.
It's cause right now, it just, there's no place for it in the code.
Right, and I.
Is like where it would fit in.
Right.
Where it would live.
Add a new.
Chapter.
Chapter 251 or something like that.
So I was looking at, actually, I saw your email before, before this meeting, so I could land right, right before or right after Chapter 211, which is Town Parks.
Okay.
So I feel like that's where it might live, because it's sort of in the same vein. It might become right after.
And those, so now those type of changes, I think, are really minor, cause it's changing the substance. But it just, it, it occurs to me that the form just needs to be refined a little bit. And I'm sorry, I missed that before, but.
Well, it sat for a little bit of time, I think, and the format of it hadn't been revisited again. So what we could do is, we can circulate the revised local law in the updated format. Not, the substance of the law itself isn't gonna change, just some of the preamble of where it's gonna live in the town code.
Yeah, and then everything else.
Nothing, the, the substance of the language of the, what's gonna be adopted into our code wouldn't change. We can share that out via email. We wouldn't be able to adopt until you've had it for 10 days. Because of the short window of time, it might not be until it's on the August legislative session.
And this is, I mean.
There's nothing, yeah, so we can prepare the local law and then have it ready for, for resolution in August.
And I'm gonna send out, I have things that I believe I still question about it, and I believe they might just be part of the forestry plan, but without, you know.
Yeah, well, that gives us, that gives us time, we can respond to that.
And then you can determine, oh, yeah, this will.
We can respond to that, and then you've got time between now and August to make sure you're comfortable.
Okay, I thought we had pretty much settled this, so that's why I was in favor of moving ahead.
Well, me too. Okay, so now, do we?
We'll just leave it as a table matter from tonight, if the board's good with that, and then we'll make the changes and.
Yeah, cause we'll have the 17th again to chat about it, and it wouldn't be until the August 1st meeting. Yeah, so we have time to navigate that.
Okay. It'll be moved to old business, right?
Yep.
So to speak. All right, the EPod overlay district.
I can take that one. So we have internally, staff had prepared a proposed amendments to Chapter 250, 6.1, and related sections of town code, meaning terms defined. And actually, one section of the existing EPod regulations doesn't really fit, shouldn't be in the EPods, cause it applies to other places outside of EPod areas, and that's timber harvesting. So we've proposed that edit to the code, so that it would be relocated to a place that makes more sense. The draft law was sent to ECC for their comment and review, and they've made their comments. The changes have been made reflective of that, and they are now generally in favor of it moving to the town board in the form of a local law for consideration. So we'd be looking for a resolution to set a public hearing to consider the local law as proposed. And we'd be setting that public hearing date for August 1st, because we don't have enough time to meet the 10-day notice requirement needed to initiate a, a local law process.
I would look, I spent a lot of time on this today, and I have to apologize that I did not get to it before today. So I looked at the suggestions, I look at what we had, and I do have several things that I would like to either send to the ECC. One opportunity I think we missed comes down to climate change, that nowhere in here, when it comes to this, is, is what we could do from a climate management perspective. So I would just want them to look at it. They might say, Linda, no, this is, none of this is necessary. But there are some concerns I have, something like with the steep slope, we reduce that steep slope amount. So there's just different things I had. I don't think we need to talk about them tonight, but I would like them to review it.
Sure, and just from a, a process standpoint, this, if you move ahead with considering the local law, there's still chance
Okay.
to change the local law, it doesn't get adopted in, in this form if it needs to be modified.
And so move forward.
It's gonna give the public an opportunity to weigh in as well and.
Okay.
The public may have concerns too.
The public's gonna bring up things that we may have considered, and they would need to be incorporated anyway.
Okay, is that a motion, Linda, to move this forward?
Set the public hearing?
Yeah, I will, I will make the motion to draft a resolution to.
Set the public hearing.
Set the public hearing.
Okay.
For our.
And that wouldn't be until, for the August meeting?
For the August.
August 1st, I believe it is. Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, Sue, vote please.
Barry.
Aye.
Lean House.
Aye.
In the Ackenden.
Aye.
Taglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, Mark, sidewalks.
So sidewalks, so we did send in our grant application to the county. Seems like that's progressing forward. So hopefully, we'll hear shortly from the county that they're gonna support that 50% matching grant. That being said, we applied and asked for basically 1.5 million dollars worth of sidewalks to allocate sidewalks on Jackson, on Plank, and then on 5 Mile. So as we look at 2025, I guess my question is typically, we have a $200,000 budget. Do we wanna apply that money towards our $800,000 bill that we've got coming? We've gotta allocate that out of somewhere for matching that, or are we looking at, you know, additional sidewalk locations above and beyond? You know, I know we've got a lot of requests. We put them in a rubric. We've got maps of all sorts of wonderful locations. But I guess we gotta look at is, you know, whether we're allocating a million dollars towards sidewalks next year. So I think the county's looking to match us to $700,000. So at 1.5 million, we've got a, a delta of 800,000 that the town needs to cover to match that, that matching part of it. So that's kind of my main question, is going into 2025, do we just allocate the 200,000 from our regular annual budget to that? And then obviously, then we still gotta figure out where the, the balance comes from, you know, unallocated, you know, fund balance to that. Or are there specific, you know, locations in 2025 that we wanna hit above and beyond those? Completion of 5 Mile, the, the Plank Road piece, and then the Jackson Road piece, which, those hit a lot of the locations that we've had requests. We've got a lot of requests from Rockaway Pines. As we've said and shared with the public before, we've had, I don't know, we're at 3.6 million dollars or more of requested locations, and we typically have a $200,000 budget. So no matter what we decide and where we decide to go, we're not gonna make everybody happy, and we're slowly kind of chipping away at it, but.
I feel like we might need some direction from finance.
I mean, we can, obviously, as we're looking at ARPA funds, we're looking at other, you know, stuff with it. So again, it doesn't need to be decided tonight. I think we can talk with, you know, our new financial person, get some information on that, and, you know, some feedback on that. Again, we're looking at next year or so, you know, at some point, we just need to, once the board's good with it, I need to then go hire surveyors, you know, then get into design through fall and winter, you know, as we look at, you know, 2025 constructions. We've got a little bit of time yet. Sorry.
No, it's just, no, I think we, for, in my opinion, 2025, we would include the 250, the normal budget we have in that money in the, you know, the county's funding. The only thing I would add is 5 Mile Road, only because it's, we have, it sounds like we have potential easements. It wouldn't be a lot, and it connects.
Two lots, so north of Bowman's, sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
So north of Bowman's, there's two home lots that would be the, a gap piece to complete between there and what'd be the Watersong neighborhood. I've heard from both of those neighbors, and to me, that's the best kind of sidewalk, is somebody's already agreeing to grant an easement. So I've heard from both of those homeowners, so the big white house up there, and then there's a house next door. Both of them have agreed, haven't put any legal things in paper yet, but both said they're interested in, you know, working with us for sidewalks and granting an easement. So maybe that's one additional add-on we would add in. But to me, those are the easiest sidewalks to do is, you know, if the homeowner's willing to grant an easement, you know, that definitely makes our life easier.
Is it the 1724?
It's up to 1234, 5 Mile. Yeah, 1234, 5 Mile, and 1240, 510 feet. So at 80 bucks a foot, you're talking about another $40,000 to complete that piece. But we can talk to finance, come back with, you know, kind of where this balances. Obviously, we're talking about a lot of money tonight and allocating to different areas and different.
And one caveat too, I mean, it's pretty assured, but it's not finalized that we've won anything from the county.
We don't have the final letter from the county, so I'm just kind of sharing anecdotal information, what we've heard so far. So until we have a letter in hand, it's probably good to hold off deciding or allocating where funds go, but kind of want to give the board an update of where we're at, as well as the public that.
And we might know within weeks, right?
I thought it was the second week of July.
Yeah.
July 10th, I heard from a bird.
Okay, so, once we hear back from the county, then it could put as a held item, we'll come back in August, see what actually the county is willing to commit, and then.
Well, we'll have the information at the July work session meeting by then, so we could sort of.
Table this?
Yeah.
Yeah? Does that make sense, everybody?
Leave it as a held item, if that's okay with the board.
Okay, I'll get more information, should go through the budget process for next year and talk to Sarah about it. Okay, so we're just gonna table that. So the crosswalk requests?
Yes, so this actually came in from Bill Wickham of Wickham Farms, inquiring, now, I don't know if you can rotate that.
Yeah, I'm gonna try, it's.
Turn your head sideways.
Let me see if I can.
With that said, Bill inquired about the possibility of, of striping and installing signage for a crosswalk on Sweets Corners to be able to connect to the overflow parking lot that he's got on the north side of Sweets Corners to the kind of walkway trail leading into the main entrance area of Wickham Farms. This was, and if we can get the map to.
I'm gonna rotate it. I have to, the computer wants to open it up in a, in a window.
That'll work. So as you see on the map, kind of the arrow pointing, that red spot, that is showing where his existing gravel kind of walkway pathways are. So it's coming off of kind of the overflow parking area to what is not a driveway, but just a, a narrow kind of walkway path. So it's also keeping pedestrians in kind of a.
Yeah, separated from, you know, the parking lot traffic, kind of keeping them a little bit safer as well.
This was discussed with the Transportation Committee last week. The Transportation Committee was supportive and, you know, wanted to share their recommendation with you for consideration. If supportive, you know, I would draft a resolution for the next legislative meeting to establish a traffic control device, being the installation of the crosswalk signage and striping of the, the road itself. I do wanna share that I did suggest or indicate to Bill that even if this were to be installed and striped and approved, that given the, the business and the seasonality of it, that would certainly recommend that he still has a parking lot attendant, you know, wear a vest, and help, you know, patrons cross back and forth. You know, certainly, I understand that crosswalk would help, I guess, give them kind of a common location to use, and that it's not just free-for-all back and forth, but that don't rely on the crosswalk thinking that that's gonna make, you know, make everything 100% safe either. So wanted to, to share this with your consideration to, to see what your thoughts were.
Who, the, the cost then would be covered by the town?
Yes.
Do we have other places where we've been, we've requested, or residents have requested something like this for safety?
Yeah.
Much a crosswalk, but.
I mean, we had residents request them, not specifically across from a given business, but obviously, we get requests for them quite often.
What I'm asking, the bottom line of what I'm asking is, how does Wickham's take precedent over if we've got residents who are saying, hey, we need to put a crosswalk here for safety, or we need crosslights here for safety? That, that's my.
And we vet all those through the Transportation Committee, so as people come up with requests and have spots and locations. And it goes through the process. We go through, you know, the Transportation Committee and look at them individually where they're requested. You know, what's the, the need, what's the, the purpose of it, you know, what's the benefit, site distance, all that stuff, you know, goes through that group.
So, so they're recommending this, you're saying, the Transportation Committee?
Committee was supportive of this one.
What do you, what do we need? What do you need from us?
A, a resolution to approve, and then that. DPW then would install.
Any other thoughts or questions on this one?
No, those are valid questions. I think we're hearing the answer. It's supported by transportation.
Transportation.
I think I leaned over to our attorney to ask if there's any issue from, I don't have an issue with it. It's got to be similar to, there's crosswalks in the middle of the road, in the four corners on 5 Mile Line Road.
Yeah, like at Liberty and.
Concentrated locations by the.
Liberty, Gav Hart.
High pedestrian activity.
By school districts, so it's just kind of where the public crosses. We're working right now on 5 Mile with the county, as we're looking at sidewalks for this year. Doing on 5 Mile near Roethlisberger Park, we've had requests, and the county just actually striped by the end of Embry.
Yeah.
So new crosswalk striping went in there. That's a county road, and then further down by Tree Brook, Taltree, Pennicott. There's been a request for that. We've gotta do some handicap ramp improvements before that one can go in. But again, working with the county on that, they're looking to put in some strength in there. So now, as the parks develop, you know, the residents nearby wanna get access to it, so try to make sure that's, you know, they're installed in safe locations. Signs are put in indicating pedestrian crossing, crosswalk ahead, all that type of stuff.
I was, I was gonna ask you about the sign.
The signs would need to go in with this as well, so indicating the crosswalks and then.
Lights with this?
How do it, there would be no lights.
No lights on this, okay.
So that's something the Transportation Committee is looking at right now. As we're doing crosswalks, everybody wants the new, their RFBs, so the reflecting flashers. We're trying to develop a policy to that, so that's something the committee's looking at, that'll come before this board of all, eventually, is whether they wanna adopt a policy. But again, looking at standardization is when are they needed? Everybody wants them at every location, but do we have power? How many people are crossing? The safety proximity to schools? So there's gonna be a whole lot of stuff that kind of goes into that policy, but we're looking to establish.
Would they be able to use like a stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk sign? Like, you know, they used to have them at four corners that were kind of in the middle of the road.
Sometimes, yeah, you can put them out there, and as Eric indicated, still have, this is a very seasonal location. I mean, they're September, October, November.
Freestanding ones that get run over by people?
Yes.
Better, better the sign than a.
You're supposed to stop for people in the crosswalk.
Better a sign than a person.
You ever been on a college campus?
Those crosswalks.
All I know is I've almost been rear-ended because I stopped for people in the crosswalk.
I would say that, I mean, the request for this is, is most comparable to the crosswalk that we did on Panorama Trail, the Clark Road at either end of Huntington Meadow last year, as well as further down, kind of connecting the north half and south half of the Shadow Pines property on Clark Road, just west of Waylon. So it was signage, it was striped, and.
A sign, yeah, the sign.
That was, yes, correct.
Okay, can I get a motion? And we're not doing lights, you said, on this. I mean, that doesn't make sense. It's seasonal, and you had indicated they, it's obvious, they still need an attendant there, but.
Yeah, I appreciate.
That was my recommendation, and he agreed and, and felt that that would be.
Right.
He also wanted to do the same.
Okay.
All right, so it's a motion to move to prepare a resolution for the next session. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Sue, vote please.
Barry.
Aye.
Lean House.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Taglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. Add to informational items, wow.
Give you just a two-second update. Staff is working on a regular basis. It's a multi-departmental representation, preparing a draft renewable energy systems code additions. And this would be added to the Chapter 250. And we're looking at, no, forgive me, that might be a separate code, but we're doing, working on the local law draft. Similar to the EPod regulations, we would circulate it to ECC first for their feedback and input. But this is to address solar, wind, battery storage, EV charging, and geothermal. And, and so using model codes available from the state and from other communities, we're putting together a draft for future consideration. The hope is. The hope is we'll have a draft ready for ECC to begin their evaluation or review in July, hoping then to have something ready for this board sometime in September, October. The hope would be to try to, you know, not, if we can't cross the finish line before the end of the year, we'd be on our way to that.
Try to complete it, wrap it up in the auditorium.
Yep.
That inspires.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Sarah Waterman's leading us in that effort.
Anything with that? No?
No, just an update.
Anything older missing? Anything new to add? Any new items? No?
I think all of you would kill us.
Okay, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 9:20. How about?